The November 20th, 2025 Planning Board Session. May we have a roll call, please?
Chair LaFaro.
President.
Vice Chair Phinity is absent. The Secretary is here. Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Blake Glazer.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
And Board Member Neely.
Present.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Yes. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Thank you. So we'll close this session and go into the work session.
For the first one.
For the first one. We'll start then with, is Claire here? Claire has two.
I tried to come in the side door. Doesn't work, right? Did you get the chip or it just doesn't work on that door? Sorry, I pressed the button. I didn't see the button.
Dennis is still out? Dennis is still recovering?
Yeah.
She'll take a time off and get better.
Thank you.
Play on Mercer. So item number two on the work session is Mercer, 74 Old Sag Harbor Road.
So Mr. Fisetti has asked for a work session on this because it has a covenant on the property and also is, does not qualify for zoning in terms of a subdivision. But it does have two houses on the property so that he wants to come and ask you if you would consider the subdivision, given that the non-conforming nature of the two residences on the property.
It is, we could, you know, have an opportunity to trade a non-conforming use.
For just to the subdivision.
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Fisetti, 320 Hampton Road, Southampton, for the applicant. This is my client, Michael Mercer, the property owner.
Hey, Michael.
Yes. So we have a non-conforming use with two houses with certificates of occupancy. I passed them out. They actually did two pre-existing ones in a row for some reason. But we would be looking at trading that for, yes, two non-conforming lots in that they, the zoning is quite high. They still would be, if you see on the second page. Yes. The properties around this property are all quite small, as you can see.
Anthony has it up there.
You can see, especially across the street. What the second page of the larger pages that I provided is our proposal where you can see actually the houses.
So Claire, just one second. Clarify the process for me here.
So because there is the extra layer of a covenant on the property saying no further subdivision of the lots, even if they got the ZBA in terms of an argument that it's a character of the neighborhood and the pre-existing, that the situation is that they have two residences now, they're not creating any more density out of this.
It's just that the wording on the map, there wasn't ever actually a covenant filed, but on the map it says no further subdivision, but it doesn't have those sort of magic words at the end without planning board approval.
Without Planning Board approval.
Approval, right. So that is, essence is a covenant. So to, and he's coming to you informally to see if that would, you think that's considered a subdivision because without your blessing of a new covenant saying they can subdivide to facilitate at least the one lots, I mean, the two lots in the situation, he could go nowhere.
Yeah.
We'd like our chance with the zoning board. We understand we have to, you know, to deal with them and establish our case to them that the two lots that we'd be creating would still fit with the character of the neighborhood and everything. But given the two certificates of occupancy and there is, you know, vested interest in those and having those, but at the same time, you know, there's an overall interest in separating the lots, like Claire said, there's no change in density, and the lots would still be over an acre, it would be 57,000.
So that's what you want to do? You want to put one of the existing houses on one parcel and one on the other. But this looks like a new house.
That's, if you look right behind that is the existing one. It's in, it's shaded. The way this came about.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. We would like to ultimately rebuild the front house, but without, you know, without dealing with the two certificates of occupancy to then go and expand it, pre-existing non-conforming use becomes a problem, so that's where we end up here.
So are you moving one of these houses? I don't understand. You have two houses.
Afterwards, potentially, yes, yes.
You're not dividing that lot.
Yeah, there's in the front lot, there's existing and then proposed.
This is the garage. I got it. Got it, got it.
So we would then also, the front lot house would then be conforming with setbacks more because it would be moved forward, but there still would be, you know, the two separate residences.
And what's the nature of the community?
You can see, particularly across the road, there are much smaller lots, but even on the subdivision itself, this was almost twice the size of the other lots in the subdivision, some of them being 60,000, 47,000, 49,000. You know, so several of the lots in the subdivision are already approximately the size of the lots that we would be trying to create here.
Was there open space created when the subdivision was?
No, this was back in 76.
Oh, before. Before.
It looks like it's heavily treed somewhere in the middle.
It's heavily treed. There is, we did also submit, the building inspector reviewed the survey and the clearing and approved, there is some pre-existing non-conforming clearing, but there is a letter from Sean McDermott establishing that percentage and saying we can't go past that.
And there's a, the second lot right now is a flag lot?
Yes. It would be, yeah, proposed as a flag lot, yes.
But right now, how is that accessed?
The driveway, the existing driveway is approximately where the flag is proposed to be on that west side of the property.
Because I'm not, it doesn't look like there's any, well, I guess there's, to get to the garage, I'm just looking for a driveway on that back lot.
If you look at this older aerial photograph, it's a little clearer how everything's accessed.
Okay, yeah.
I can see.
There's a lot on the line.
So one question that I would have, because it's in the aquifer protection overlay district, is the before and, or the current and the after, how much clearing or coverage you'd have? Would you be close in compliance with the plan?
We would be in compliance with the, the building inspector's confirmation of the pre-existing non-conforming clearing. I believe it was like 48%.
Forty-four.
Forty-four percent was Sean McDermott confirmed by letter last year was pre-existing clearing that was allowed to remain. We would not be proposing to go any further past that.
Right. So when there's a change, a new proposal, typically we look to get things fully. So with your setbacks in creating these two lots, I was just wondering what the coverage of vegetation would be, you know, and how far off would you be from?
Yeah, but I think with the, with the new, when it goes to that, I think I'd become close because all of this is boarded and all of this is boarded. So I think when the two lots split, I think I get a lot closer.
Would you be doing replanting?
I can, yeah.
We might ask that.
I mean, it's a tough sell to do non-conforming lots in aquifer protection overlay district, but if you plan that where you're coming into compliance with the APOD coverage, then it's fully coming in, you know, or more compliant with the goals of that overlay district.
We submitted to do for the front house, the new septic system.
I was just going to ask if you're going to put in.
Right. So those two things are very important, that critical piece of this puzzle.
I currently have two separate septic systems and two separate wells. If it would help, I mean, I'm in the septic business and my cousin's own Fuji Clean, so I would do both houses.
That's good.
If you guys wanted that.
Would be very helpful, particularly APOD, yeah.
Interesting approach to something that on its face seems counterintuitive, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But then we're getting benefits.
And we're taking away two certificates of occupancy to two dwellings on one property, which is, you know, a step in the right direction as far as conformity with.
So now you'll have two tax mats?
Two separate lots, two tax mats, two houses, really separate, still both over an acre, you know, and like I said, still fitting in the character of the neighborhood, which we'll also have to go through the zoning board with.
Right.
What's the size of the lots proposed?
Fifty?
A acre each and 42,798. 57,374 and 42,798.
Okay.
That's 50% clearing?
Correct.
So it's five acre zoning in the area, but are you saying most of those other properties aren't?
I believe at the time of the subdivision, it was not five acre in 76. So yes, a lot of those lots are.
Because the zoning was in the 80s.
Yeah, subdivision was 77. But a lot of those lots are 51, 53, 50,000, 51,000. Here is one that's 49, 47.
So comparable to what the lot would be?
Absolutely, yes.
When it's divided. So what would we do, Claire? I mean.
That's what you say with this work session. He's got his direction. He can go to the zoning board deals if they grant it, they'll be back to you with those two caveats.
I would come first for a pre-apt.
Pre-apt with us, yeah.
Pre-apt first, yeah, and then go to the zoning board and then come back to you for a final.
Good.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need to amend? How do we amend that actually?
Well, you would have to also ask for the covenant amendment at the time of your pre-apt, right?
Oh, okay. Incorporate that into the pre-apt, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just be aware too, that we'd be looking for, if this goes forward, when you're constructing a new house, anything else that you really maintain the clearing, the clearing will be very key. And during construction, you'll really have to put up limiting fences to prevent clearing. Where movement in the house may have been restored to try and maintain that balance of clearing.
And the upgraded septic.
And the upgraded septics and maybe some revenge, yeah. Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. You might need to use the ZBA. Claire, do you want to do United Order?
Yes, please.
Do you have Anthony?
I just believe they're here. You hear?
Okay.
Yeah, Aaron's right there.
Hampton Shipyard Marina and Restaurant. Let me get.
If we're going to one place, we're going to Hampton Shipyard.
So number one, Hampton Shipyard Marina and Restaurant, for the record.
Carl Manacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the applicant.
Aaron Tertunian, First Coastal, West Hampton Beach, New York, for the applicant.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So this was submitted for site plan approval and the board.
Schedule a pre-submission conference, just a class.
Yes, that's what I mean. Schedule a pre-submission conference. And the board requested a work session.
Right.
To discuss, I guess, any questions you may have or?
Well, this is a very large parcel, right?
It's actually.
Three parcels.
It's four parcels.
Four.
Oh, this one too?
That one's included too. So they're all in the RWB zoning district except for the one that's right on Montauk Highway, which is OD.
HO, HR.
Or HO, I thought that was, okay. Yes, you're right, HO, excuse me. The proposal, currently, the area is lots, essentially one operating unit.
Tell us what's there now.
It's a marina and a boatyard. It's known as the Hampton Shipyard Marina, Stoppenich Marina. But essentially, it's a boatyard, boat storage, boat servicing, and a marina. There is also a single-family dwelling in non-conforming, you can see it, it's on the, no, not that one, that one. Yep. It's on the lot second to the south, and it's a non-conforming use in the RWB that as part of this application that will be destroyed and removed.
We have, I don't know, we have one page of this sheet. Was that meant to be handed out?
That's the proposed site plan, yep. You only have one of them?
So we share.
We can share, but I think nobody else.
No, we only have, we only have this.
Oh, you only have this? They only have this one, they don't have the area?
So you got to give them, we'll share these two.
You can share that, yeah? No, there's a.
There's a pair. Existing and proposed.
The existing buildings on site, there's a one and a half story, 17,300 square foot shipbuilding facility. That's that large building that Anthony's, no, I actually went over. There it is. That's the shipbuilding, manufacturing building.
They actually make boats?
Yeah, they did for 70 years.
Did, but do not now.
Well, not since the new owners bought it. But yes, the old owners made boats then.
What kind of boats? Sailboats or?
No, well, they made SSs, which is a small sailboat, but the signature boat was called the Columbia II, and they made that for many years. They also made boats for Fire Island Ferry, National Park Service. I mean, they have a huge.
Large boats.
You know, anywhere from like 25 to 50 feet.
So now it's not functioning as that and it's empty?
It's functioning now as a marina use continues, but they're no longer, and the boat servicing component.
In storage.
And storage, but the shipbuilding is no longer functioning.
So that happens in that building?
In that large building.
Dark, the dark building, yeah.
There's a two-story, 2,100 square foot, single-family home, which Anthony highlighted, a one-story, 7,200 square foot used for boat storage, and that's that building.
Storage and service.
Servicing. And there is a workshop, a storage and a workshop component to the large building, which is on the southernmost lot, and an office in there as well. And that's, those are the improvements that are currently on the lot. Many of the historic structures and existing structures are incorporated into the proposed site plan before you, or that has been submitted for review. It includes the expansion of the marina use by expanding existing dockage, the proposal, removal of that single-family home, inclusion of a restaurant into the large building where there's, that was, that was used for the shipbuilding previously. And then along with the standard marina use, which includes storage, dry and wet storage of boats, docking, and servicing of boats, there'll also be a pool for use of, by marina members. And that is essentially the broad strokes of the proposed development. Obviously, you will have questions on specifics. The use is permitted in the RW zone, RWB zone. The use contemplates 96 parking spaces, when as you see through the calculations, only 84 are required. Those parking spaces would be located primarily on Montauk Highway, on the HO parcel, which ultimately will, this will all be as part of this, will merge them into one.
You'll merge.
One parcel. That's exactly right. That's where the parking will be. If you look at Carter now, if you want to look at Carter Lane now, you'll see it's very sort of informal. There's loosely paved areas, sort of running on the property line on Carter Lane. That will all be formalized as part of this.
Is that a town road or a private road?
It's a private road.
And parking on the road itself, not abutting the road on the property?
There'll be no parking on the road.
And that's a residential?
All parking is onsite.
Residential area or something right across the road?
So it's actually RWB all the way down. It's just developed as a residential area.
Those houses are zoned RWB?
Is RWB stretching down?
No, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, this is R20 down here.
That's R20. I thought you meant along the waterfront. All those are, that's all RWB.
And this is R20.
So this is the one commercial?
One actual correct use of, in the zoning district, yes. Everything else is a non-conforming residential, except as you go all the way south, there's another marina right there.
So right now, it does not have a wet use, except the house that's not supposed to be there?
What do you mean by a wet use?
Restaurant and bathrooms?
Restaurant. There is a bathroom in the facility, but yes, other than the house and that bathroom, there is no.
So we're talking about a lot more?
Flow.
Yes.
Well, this, there would be an STP, well, not an STP, but an advanced septic as part of this development. And the advanced septic would go up under the parking area. So we're pushing it to the highest point on the property to get the greatest amount of purification as the.
Is that going to be a pump system?
Can you put parking on top of?
Yes.
Yeah, people do.
So there's a. Anthony comes with a covenant, but you can do it.
And the restaurant use is allowed in RWB or?
Yes.
So would there be, if you have a pool, you have a restaurant, this looks like it's going to be like a private club of some kind. I mean, is there a clubhouse envisioned or?
Well, I guess the restaurant, there's no clubhouse envisioned. You're talking about locker rooms in the lot?
Yeah, something related.
I mean, that can all, whoever ultimately, you know, whatever the ultimate use is, that can certainly be accommodated. As we sort of vet this with you, those changes can be made, but there's no plan right now for a locker room. If you look, the plan is for a restaurant with 86 seats, outdoor decks, marina office, dock slips, marina, and some seasonal uses, but the seasonal uses are indoor boat storage, which is certainly part and parcel of the marina operations. And there was discussion of an indoor pickleball during the winter season.
Maybe what Tom was asking, not putting words in there, but is this a private members-only marina?
Oh, you're saying is it open to the public? Well, there.
It sounds like it's going to be a private club of some kind.
The marina itself, the marina operations, the boat storage, the boat docking, is that going to be for private members? Like, is it going to be like a private membership?
No, that's not, no, that's not the intent right now. It would be a, it would be a public, anyone could come.
Commercial.
Yeah, commercial.
What about showers? I mean, I mean, if you're getting off the boat and you're going into a pool, I'm anticipating clients are going to want showers and places to change their clothes. And laundry facilities? Are you providing all that? I mean, is this going to be, this is a work session, so we're asking you all of this.
No, these are, these are good points. Again, you have a somewhat loose site plan before you, and we're, as part of this process is to vet it through the pre-submission process, pre-application process.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking.
Those are good points though.
Just personally, if I got off the boat and maybe I had gone swimming from my boat, now I'm all salty and sandy, do you really want me in your pool?
Of course. And then. No, it's a good point, and those facilities can easily be provided.
I'm just looking at it from a person using it.
These aren't major amendments to the site plan.
So, I mean, I'm looking at the environmental impact of this. Well, that's kind of where I'm going. Which is major, okay? You've got a lot of cars on a non-superhighway road opposite residences, number one. Number two, you've got Wease Creek here, which is already an impaired water body. You're putting in a system, a septic system, to handle everything, but you've got restaurant, you've got pool, you've got showers, you have everything else that goes with that. Do you have a pump-out station as part of the marina?
No.
No. Do you have fuel?
No.
None of?
No, no fuel, no pump-out. Pump-out is provided by Southampton Town. They have a pump-out boat that goes from marina to marina.
Okay. We learned that.
Could I offer a couple of ideas that just surfaced for me? As the project has developed, right, you're looking, the client's probably looking for ways of return on investment, and you are probably aware of that Suffolk County just put together a working waterfront legislation. It seems like this could be an interesting thing to explore for this area, maintaining some kind of working waterfront with the trade-off of taking the development rights for that purpose off the property and reducing the tax burden. So I'd love to see that because I think there probably are, like, if you look in, I think Suffolk County has record as well as the town on aquaculture lease sites, and there's been a lot of investment at the state level for that. So then you're kind of turning the project around a little bit, but you're are at that stage where, you know, could be something to consider.
Well, we, thank you for bringing that up. We're actively pursuing that. One of the issues is countywide, they only have nine and a half million dollars to spend. So there's a lot of competition for that money, but we are going after that.
Well, do you have any working fishing boats here or are these all pleasure boats?
I do, next door, there's a commercial fisherman, but we don't have the facilities to, we don't propose the facilities to service commercial fishing. There's no refrigeration.
How about just dockage?
I don't think we're allowed to have commercial at a private dock, at a recreational dock.
If you look at the Shoals, I think it is, in Southold, they work with Little Ram Oyster Company, and, you know, the oyster boats are, many of them are not as big, right? So looking at that model, there is like a hotel restaurant and then a shared commercial and resident, or, you know, not residential, but the Shoals.
They could provide you with fresh oysters.
So, yeah, just looking, and in Greenport too, like, looking at ways of sharing the space between tourism and, you know, working waterfront.
If we're allowed to do that, there is no impediment to doing it. I don't know that we reserve that, but we definitely, you know, attract it and desire it.
Can you tell us what, what was the number of the existing boats at this marina and what you're proposing now, what the increase is? Looking on the.
Thirty-five.
Eighty-nine wet and dry boat slips, eighty, what was it? Is what, I'm looking for the expansion.
Thirty-five. So it's increasing to 35. I think there's about 15 there now. There's about 15 or 18 there now, and we're going to 35.
Who authorizes? Is that the trustees or the DEC or? Who gives you permission for additional dock?
The Army Corps, the DEC, and the Department of State, and the trustees, and we have those permits.
But it says here on your plan, not 35, it says 89 wet and dry boat slips.
That includes the dry.
Including the dry boat slips.
Yeah, so.
Storage.
Yeah. So we're proposing what they call a rack and roll system, which is inside that large metal building, they build a whole rack system, and then you can just pull the boats in and out automatically through the rack system.
So all of the storage will be internal? It's not going to be outside wrapped?
That's correct.
Not all being held?
Yeah, and I, I sat down, I met with the applicant to, you know, go over this initially. So all this that you see out here is going to be removed. They're lifting a lot of the asphalt, I believe, actually. So that's being done. Just that, you know, the plan also shows here, and we'll get into, when we get the pre-submission conference report, all this will be outlined. They're showing, you know, a potential road widening event in the event that, you know, it's offered to the town, then they could get a proper road in there. And with, and just, you know, with the permits that are in place already for the boat slips and the bulkhead, which have all the necessary approvals, the establishment of some wetlands buffers as part of those approvals, which are shown on the site plan.
Are they sufficient?
Well, we'll, we'll see. I don't know. You know, it's early, but we'll see. We still have to send this off to Marty's office during the formal and all that.
I mean, they're taking notes about, because it's a work session.
Hundred percent. My guess is, you know, we'll have some more stuff we want to include.
I was going to ask that question before, if you were, if you were looking to dedicate this road, do a town law 200 and dedicate, dedicate Carter Lane to the town.
Yeah, we want, and also there's, on the plane, it's a little hard to see because it's dark, but screening between the road and the rest of the facility, respect for the neighbors on the other side of the road. Right now, they're staring, you know, directly into, you know, 40-foot tall buildings. And we were thinking a road widening easement as opposed to a town law 200 action, but we would give land to increase the width of the road.
So your storage is right there, so you're not trucking all the boats in and out every season? They're like, staying there?
Yes.
It's difficult to see, but what size of boats we're looking at? I know there's obviously some larger ones and.
Yeah. Basically, the largest that really can navigate this creek effectively are like 32 to 35 feet. Most of the boats are usually around 24 to 29. There's a few larger ones, but that's the size that would fit in there.
So what did you tell me the increased number was?
We're doubling, yeah.
You're doubling it?
From fifteen, well, fifteen, eighteen to thirty-five.
Okay. I think we have to be aware of Weesa Creek, which is an impaired water body, and you're putting more boats in. There are oil spills. I don't care how you slice it, Montauk goes through this all the time. And even though you're not gonna have a fuel, full fueling situation or a pump-out, is there a future for a fueling pump?
No.
Why?
Because it's problematic. They're, you know, the regu, first of all, we don't have space. Second of all, the regulations are really dramatic. And third of all, there's alternatives.
What are they?
Go to Oakland, you can go to, there's a half a dozen marinas within five miles that you can get fuel. So, and, and with respect to Weesa Creek, which we completely understand, the improvements that have already been made on the site, which are right, prior to the, the current owners taking possession, there was no stormwater controls on the site whatsoever. The water ran all the way from Carter Lane and sheet flow straight into the creek. I would say eighty percent of that has been eliminated with a reconstructed bulkhead, a buffer zone behind it, active drainage that's pulling the water off of Carter and infiltrating it into the ground high up, because this is a pretty steeply sloped area. I mean, there must be ten or twelve feet of pollution. So those have already been put into place and are gonna be augmented with this redevelopment plan. For right now, for example, there's a, not, not a boat lift, but a travel lift. And that whole travel lift, it's about twenty-five feet wide, and all the water runs straight off that right into the bay. That's gonna be eliminated. We're gonna go to this rack-and-roll system. It's gonna have forklifts, and the whole boundary along the creek is now gonna be buffered with a, you know, with a, a grass or vegetative buffer. So there's a tremendous amount of pollution that we're preventing that is actively occurring right now.
Was the bulkhead in pretty bad repair when this?
No, it was pretty good, actually, but, but, you know, it was, the way they did it in the old days, they blacked up, right, you know, blacked off straight to the, to the bulkhead. So there was nothing stopping the water from just flowing over the top.
And what material did you use to repair the bulkhead?
That's all PVC vinyl.
PVC vinyl?
And you said you have permits in place already for the, these thirty-five slips that we saw, including the, the docks that go out into the creek?
That's correct.
Okay.
And do the trustees give them that, or? So the trustees are aware of this plan?
They've approved this plan, yeah.
Approved it. Okay, we'll need some verification from them.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Can you also, when you come in for this, just provide a before and after on the flow, like, with the septic flow, what the increase is? I think that's an important component, even though the use is allowed.
Required flow?
What you have now, estimated flow per gallons per day, and what is proposed, what that would produce gallons per day?
Because you have an eighty-six-seat restaurant.
Yeah, but we're getting rid of a home. You know, we're getting rid of a home, and.
But that's not apples to apples, an eighty-six-seat restaurant and one home.
I think you'll have the calculation, and I think we'll have to compare that.
We're, we're within our allowable limits. We're not asking for anything beyond what the.
You're within your allowable limits.
Oh, yes, yeah.
For a commercial restaurant at eighty-six seats.
Given the, the, the area for all those properties.
Yeah, when you combine all the properties together, we're under our allowed flow rate.
That's still for our interpretation of what would be logical intensification of use, like what magnitude, especially given this area. So I think that component of comparing before and after are important.
Happy to give you the information.
Thank you.
Well, that's, that, look, that's why we're here at a work session, you know, to have given flow and not, it's not an antagonistic situation. We're trying to get information. While asking questions.
No, it doesn't feel antagonistic. It feels very nice.
Good, okay.
Do you tell me why this is shaded? I'm sorry, why this is.
We like work sessions, because we, we have a chance to give us, give opinions before you spend a lot of time and, more time and effort.
Is there some meaning behind the shading, the different shading for the parking over here versus the shading over here? This parking shaded differently than this parking.
One's gonna be permeable.
Oh, one's permeable, yes. I got it. So that's the one.
The gray is permeable?
The darker gray, I think it's the lighter gray is permeable. Got it. Thank you.
So a gravel of some kind?
That'll be gravel, yes. Got it. And this is all existing concrete, so any addition is gonna be permeable.
So seasonally, the boats come out, the boats go in, building number eight?
It sounds like even all summer, they're gonna be going in and out.
No, no.
If you have, if you only have thirty-five slips and you have.
For the rock, what do you, what did you?
Rack and roll.
Rack and roll, yes, but not for the building eight. That'll be just a winter storage.
But I'm talking about in, in July, is my boat always gonna be in the water, or is it sometimes gonna be in a building somewhere, and I'm gonna have to call you and say, I wanna use it tomorrow?
Yeah, on demand.
Okay.
Really? It depends.
There's a lot like that in East Orange, right?
Yep. It's really the way a lot of places are going.
Is there a?
Because you can't get all the slips in the water.
Is there a launch ramp?
Parking in Manhattan.
There is a launch ramp. You can see it right.
Well, it's not a ramp. It's, it's gonna be a forklift, a situation. So instead of having a ramp that runs into the water.
Just, just be on number one there, that's.
It'll just be flat right up to the edge of the bulkhead, and that way we can prevent the sheet flow from going into the creek.
So in the wintertime, when the boats are in eight, okay, the restaurant will continue to function? Okay, that'll be year-round. Pool will close. But the pickleball will be opened?
Might be. Well, that might be better, boot storage, right?
Cover the pool and do pickleball. No, the pickleball was proposed for the, where?
Seasonal use.
Well, it says summer indoor pickleball, wintertime is boat storage.
Summer, it's indoor pickleball, and winter, it's boat storage. Yes.
Okay.
Good use.
Okay, any other, any other questions?
So we are submitted on this. We're just waiting for.
Jackie, just real quick, when we, after you do your next work session, when we start the next meeting, can I just, I, we're starting a new program for these, and I messed up a little bit, so I just wanna add this so we could schedule the pre-submission conference.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Well, thanks for the input. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Boats on demand is something, boats on demand is fascinating. Is this the norm?
It's becoming.
There's a car in the garage. What, what are you talking about?
They're, they're on demand.
Oh.
Yes.
And then drone boats someday.
Well, that's for traffic.
Traffic relief, yeah.
Subscribe for a boat.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah. Claire, United?
Appreciate it.
Someone here for that?
Do you need a?
There we go.
Do you need our easel?
Whatever is best for everybody.
We've seen various interpretations of this.
I have a couple copies, too, of, like, existing proposal, if you don't mind sharing the four copies there.
Name your name for the record.
Yes, I have a little. Walter Morris. Yes, I wrote up a little presentation, if that's okay.
And? Doug Morris. Claire, do you want one?
Yeah, so, I think we're familiar with United Artists, property site plan gone through. Most recently, in around 2020, there was an application to change it into a CVS. It didn't, was not successful. Well, it didn't go any further because United Artists decided, or the movie theater, decided to stay for longer. That is ending, I understand, from the applicants. So this space would be, how much, how big is this space, Walter?
The theater is, the current theater space is fifteen thousand square feet.
Okay, so, so he is looking to have a new tenants to go into that space. He doesn't know what the tenant is yet, but he wants to make improvements to the outside of the facility to attract either one or more, maybe split up the space, obviously, that's an option. It is own village business, to facilitate a, a new tenant retail or whatever would be appropriate for the zoning, permitted use, of course. So this, this is the existing, and then there is a proposal to, for the change to the exterior, a new roof that would be part of the components. And that's the, what you see at the bottom of the facility. So I thought a work session would be appropriate. It's a very visible part of Hampton Bays. On the first blast from the planning perspective, it looks like an improvement. It's going to this ARB as a review, or it was, right, on Tuesday?
ARB approved it.
Yeah, they approved it on Tuesday. So what the process would be with you, usually with things like this, that's going in the right direction, we, we do some type of expedited review, subject to fire marshal review on this, so that would be my suggestion.
So you took out the dormers?
Well, I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wrote a little presentation, so.
Please.
You could get the full picture. My name is Walter Morris, president of WDP Enterprises, the, the owner of the United Artists Movie Theater Shopping Center located at the southeast corner of Springville Road and West Montauk Highway in Hampton, Hampton Bays. I've been in the construction and real estate development business for over thirty-five years and have owned this property since 2002. I'm here today to ask for your approval to allow me to refresh and revitalize the front of this shopping center. Although there have been minor changes made to the exterior of the building over the past ten years, it has not been substantially upgraded since the movie theater took occupancy over twenty-five years ago. I was recently advised by the movie theater parent company, Regal Cinemas, that they plan to wind down operations and close the theater within the next few months. So I thought now would be the right time to begin the process of obtaining permits to refresh the building and then the property. The scope of work I am proposing right now is mainly cosmetic, repainting the existing siding and exterior trim, replacing the mansard roof shingles with new forty-year GAF black roof shingles, improving the facade signs for the existing tenants, and installing decorative gooseneck lighting fixtures. I am also proposing architectural modifications in addition, in additions, excuse me, and additions to the facade, which include the following. Want to change the pitch of the existing mansard roof at the current movie theater space. It's just a little out of scale there, above the doghouse dormers. We wanna sort of bring the whole thing into balance. It's been a little bit of a hodgepodge as it's been developed and changed over the last few years. We wanna remove the existing doghouse dormers above the movie theater space, and we wanna add two shed dormers, one on either side of the proposed new tenant space, for both aesthetic balance and also to provide a reasonable space for tenant signage. They have no signs, the two tenants in those locations. They're just like nine-inch by twenty-four-inch hanging signs from nails. I also propose to install a standing seam metal roof above the fascia board of the future tenant space, and also with the two shed dormers, as well as, for lack of a better word, those three towers. Right now, it's old dilapidated roofing. We wanna put the standing seam metal. I think it's a very sharp look.
I like the windows.
I'm getting to that. Regarding these three existing towers, I propose to also adjust the roof pitches, add decorative windows, replace the existing dilapidated shingle siding with AZAC trim, and also add corbels and gooseneck light fixtures, as shown. You know, it's a little far away, but I think it's a big improvement. I'm also proposing changes to the exterior entrance doors and windows at the existing theater space. This design provides an aesthetically pleasing look while also allowing flexibility to lease this space to as few as one new tenant or as many as three future tenants. We've been trying for years, but we have nobody.
You're talking specifically about the movie theater piece when you say one to three.
The movie theater is leaving soon.
Yeah.
We have a phone call with them tomorrow. They're gonna discuss an exact schedule, but my guess is that right after the holidays, they're gonna start to wind down.
So if you divide the movie theater space, you don't get one tenant for it, you'll use that fascia for the signage?
Yes, there would.
Yeah, there's space along there?
I would suspect there would be a sign where it says future tenant.
And then to the right and to the left, yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll see how that goes. I mean, my, my goal for right now is really to refresh the front. One, it needs it. I mean, it, the center's getting tired, but there's other reasons as well. The main roofing, the rubber roofing on top of the building needs to be replaced. It's twenty-five years old, and you do not wanna put a new rubber roof on this and then have a mansard built with people walking all over it. So you, you wanna get this work done first. Also, the front parking lot, it's time for that to be repaved. But again, you don't wanna have heavy machinery, trucks, and people working on a building or on a new paved area. So this is the process. First, the front, then the roofing, then the paving, and hopefully, somewhere along the way, we get a new tenant for the theater space. We're, we're talking to a couple of people. It's just.
I'm glad you mentioned the parking lot, because the configuration of it, sometimes the flow in there is not very good, and so I'm wondering if you would consider some sort of landscaping islands as part of a reconfigured flow on the parking area?
The issue with that is that what's there now is what's approved as far as the site plan goes. And to get that, the previous owner had to purchase eight land bank stalls or eight stalls from the Southampton Town Fund, I believe it's, parking fund. So based on current calculations, you have eight less parking spots than you need, and if you're gonna do islands, you're gonna lose more. And, for example.
Usually, we ask for an exploration of that, um, yeah, given the character.
It's land banking, and you can make it, and if you ever really needed to establish it back, you could do it.
Let me give you an example. So we tried very hard to have a well-known supermarket take this site, something that the Chamber of Commerce and the Civic Association brought to us and said, we would love to have them. And they took a very close look at it, and at the end of the day, they passed, because they said a hundred seventy-five parking spaces is not enough.
Right. You also have a potential cross-access with the neighboring property that should be explored, whether or not it's viable right now?
I know you weren't here when, for five years we did that, we had CVS sign a lease to take the space. And it was suggested to CVS, they were handling the application about the cross-easement. CVS said, yes, let, let's explore it. So the neighbor next door wanted a tremendous amount of money for the opportunity to have this cross-easement with us. And besides that, the cost, because the grade is, they don't have any parking in the front. Their parking is in the back. To melt the two parking lots and the drainage and what was required was in excess of two million dollars. So at the end of the day, that was a deterrent, that we're losing parking spaces, retail people who have their stores in the front don't care about parking in the far back, and it was two million dollars in additional cost plus what would be required to pay the existing owner for that privilege.
Right, so you're asking for an expedited site plan review, and, you know, it's our job to offer that.
Yeah.
In order to receive something like that, there needs to be a creative approach to solving some problems that are already there. And it may have been, and I was here when CVS had come in more recently, that it wasn't feasible at that time, but there is an opportunity and a logic there, for sure. People are already using, they go through the fence.
Oh, I know.
You don't see it, right? So I think it's important to explore that creatively and allow us the opportunity to also consider, you know, how that would improve the character.
So I know it's a work session, and I don't, I'm not gonna explore with the adjoining neighbor, combining the parking lots at our cost and paying him to do that. I just, I don't wanna open that door, because we've been through it before. And what we're looking to do is take a tired shopping center and make it beautiful.
You want some cosmetics, Wes?
Right, and part of that, I think, is.
Right, I'll, I'll just finish up the presentation, because some of this has it in there. I wrote, if this application is approved, and after the exterior remodel has been completed, I plan to replace the flat roofing for the entire building and to repave and restripe at least the front parking lot. This additional work, however, will not begin until the equipment needed to complete the exterior remodeling work has been removed from the site. The cost of the entire scope of work we're proposing at this time is substantial, but I feel it is extremely important to maintain our properties from both a functional as well as an aesthetic standpoint. I have been encouraged to do this by several members of the community, including members of the Hampton Bay Civic Association and Hampton Bay's Chamber of Commerce. I understand their wishes. The existing building looks tired. The existing building looks tired, it needs to be freshened up. Also, it's my experience that when one owner improves his property, other neighboring owners often follow suit. And hopefully, the revitalization of this shopping center will have a positive impact on the future of the Hampton Bay's downtown area.
So if you, if you get an expedited agreement to do it, how long do you think it'll take you?
I haven't given that that much thought, because this is something, because of my existing tenants, the construction can't go on during the summer. That's when they do all their business. So is it possible? And I didn't even know we were doing expedited. My thought process was, let me get the ball rolling. The theater is going to leave.
That makes sense.
You know.
Yeah, I mean.
I think realistically, you know, we still have to go through a process. This might not start till after next Labor Day.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. It's never been my experience, even with the word expedited, that we're going to have a building permit in four weeks.
No.
So, you know, I would be thinking fall of twenty-six. I don't think the exterior work would take much more than eight to ten weeks. But if approved, I will be then bringing in also a building permit application to de-theaterize the existing theater.
You have to gut it?
Yeah, it's all different levels. So we have to take everything out, and we have to fill the floor and make it level. Now, that's going to bring additional changes, ARB and planning board with the rear. Because right now, when you walk out of the theater in the back, you're four feet below grade, and you have stairwells, and you walk upstairs, that's never going to work for another tenant. So the floor would be brought up to level from the, you know, it's probably four feet higher in the front than it is in the back. So it's a tremendous amount of work. But eventually, you would see it as a clear space, one hundred and ten feet wide by approximately one hundred and thirty-seven feet deep, new concrete slab floor. And then I would like to think it's a good enough location that with an attractive building, you'll have interest. It's a tough one.
I hope so for you. You've stuck with it a long time.
We've been trying for.
A long time.
Many, many years.
I just have a question about the windows, which I really love. Will they actually have some light coming through? Will they have some illumination?
You mean into the stores themselves?
No, no.
True windows to the outside.
Please.
Will there be inside lights that show on the outside? Is that what you mean?
I'm not sure I understand. I don't think the tenants will be able to get sunlight from the window.
No, no, no.
Interior lights that show to the street.
Decorative, yeah.
Oh, would I do something to light them up?
Yeah.
That is something I'm very happy to do, if that's something that you think would look great.
Claire, I would, I think the look here is great. My concern about expedited is, I agree with Kate that we really need to look at the parking, and I don't know how that fits in to the process. Because I, it, the parking is not very attractive. And the idea of having something a little better-looking and also better environmentally, where we have some, someplace for rain garden, kind of. I think is, we know that's how things should be built now. We didn't know that when this was built originally.
Yeah, this is built with maximizing every parking space.
I feel it's our responsibility to say, this is 2025. This is, if we were starting from scratch, this is how we would do it.
Are we saying then that we can't fix up our building with that?
I'm asking the process, that's all.
We're not starting from scratch. This is an application to refresh the outside look of the building, to make it more attractive. I don't see a nexus between that and asking for, you know, cross-access easements and additional parking and losing park. I think that comes when you lease a space to, and you're looking to see what exactly are your parking requirements for the use that you're getting into that space.
That's why I'm asking the process, Claire. How does that work?
It seems that you're asking for us to not give this approval until we come up with solutions for the parking lot, which will include, you know, changes of parking lot, loss of parking spaces, you know, which is a bigger issue than coming to say, just change the roof and.
I don't think I'm saying anything different. I just want to understand where it fits.
Both sort of help. I have two tenants that have long-term leases where I don't have the right to reduce parking in the shopping center without their approval. We were approached recently by AutoZone, and we were willing to do something with them. They wanted half the building, but they said, you know, ten-year lease, three, six, five-year options after that. You can't make any changes to the front parking lot, the striping, the curb cuts, anything without our approval. And we passed on that, because, again, I've been, I've been doing this since some thirty-five years. So I understand on all sides. I understand what the tenants want, which is brutally difficult now. Retail is not in favor. If they can't get what they want, they're not coming. They're going where they can get what they want. And what they want is front convenient parking. And I understand in a lot of towns, people want green. But it's very hard to do green on a corner at a light at a shopping center and get, you know, you're not going to get a tenant that can afford to be there when you can't have a car drive up right to their front door.
I guess what I was suggesting is you have that triangle that's striped, you know, that's not parking spots. I mean, even just exploring that, it's like, you know, not losing any parking places. So, you know, you receive the feedback and then start to turn the problem around and see how, you know, it might be solved. And if you come back to us during this process to say, "We explored it this way, this way, and this way, and really, this is the best path forward," I think also just reconvening, you know, I'm not saying you can't refresh the facade of a building without exploring a whole site plan approval, but what happens when the use is determined? Does it come back? You know, and we, I think we just need an answer.
So if someone takes more than 5,000 square feet, you would see it as a special exception.
Okay, gosh.
But if he chooses to split it into four units of the 15,000, you would not see it. Yeah. So just, that's just, that's what the code says.
That's a negotiation point, right, of saying, okay, well, you may not want to reconfigure the parking, but there is some opportunity there with that striped triangle to potentially explore some improvement.
Respectfully, what I would say, and again, it's not my first time here, and I've owned this a long time. If I was bringing in a tenant for that space, even if it's fully conforming and requires less parking than the movie theater, and you said, "Hey, can you do a nice planting area in that triangle? You're not going to lose any parking spaces." And my tenant was like, "Yeah, that's fine with us, that would look great." The answer would absolutely be yes. If you're asking me to do that stuff now as a negotiation to spend a couple of million dollars to re-roof the building, do the front facade, and do the parking lot, I would say that I'm not going to do it.
Yeah, and so for us, you know, like, this isn't a building permit, it's a site plan. So that's where we do need, I feel, we need to, like, consider the actual site plan, the whole thing, right? Even though the component that you're suggesting is, you know, reasonable, right?
If that's what the board has the ability to do, then so be it, but.
That's my opinion, I won't speak for anyone else.
I mean, you know me, I'm sort of a straight shooter. I don't want to, I don't want to say maybe this, maybe that, I don't know.
I think we, I think we hear you loud and clear. My only issue always with expedited site plan review is that when you get into the guts of something, a lot of unknowns happen. Things collapse, you've got rotten timbers, and it develops into something so much more. How do we handle that, Claire? How would we?
I mean, we, I don't think this is dilapidated, right? It's just, I think it's.
The building's in excellent structural shape. We just want to bring it, want to make it nicer. It's, it needs to be painted, but you don't want to paint it unless you put new trim on the columns.
Yeah, you have to do it.
And take the siding off those towers and do a nice AZAC detail with the corbels. I mean, it's far away for you to see, but there's a lot of really pretty detail on those towers and.
Yeah, the towers look nice.
And we provide, again, I don't know if this is something the board likes, but I don't know how in today's world, how a tenant cannot have a place to show their business sign when you're one hundred and fifty feet off the road. Right now, it's, you know, two little nails that hold up a little tiny sign. So, you know, I propose to make it balanced, beautiful, functional, aesthetically pleasing. It's, when the theater leaves and it's vacant, it's going to get worse. There's other problems over there, which you may or may not be aware of, that has nothing to do with the building, just with homelessness and things of that nature, which are going to get difficult.
So you would want to start almost immediately, once the theater is out of there?
Again, I can't do the construction during the summer, because the tenants will all go out of business. So if I had a permit January first, would we look at the possibility of getting it done that quickly? Maybe, but my, my thought process really is, we're going to mobilize, get it ready to go, probably start right after next Labor Day. That'll take about ten weeks. And as it's getting done, put the new roof on the entire building, because there's leaks now. We're band-aiding the leaks. The, to re-roof that building is about $550,000. So, you know, we're not going to spend that and then have people walking on it, building the towers and.
It has to be integrated, yeah.
It does.
I think we understand.
Same with the parking lot, too. It's time. And I think, I understand what you're saying. I'm not dismissing it by any means. I just want to do it when we get a tenant, because if we're going to lose space, if we're going to lose visibility, we might not get the tenant. I have, I have been trying since when did you get out of college?
Just, I just want to remind the board if I, that the zoning board also has their meeting tonight. I have to just remind everybody. So we got to move this along, we didn't get to anything yet.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So move on.
We have 7-Eleven on tonight, so you know.
Okay, thanks very much. We understand. All right, so then let's move along, right? Anthony?
Thanks.
Number four?
Jackie, just real quick, if we could do the Hampton Shipyard Marina and Restaurant? Just add that to schedule the pre-submission conference?
Okay, so let's add it to the end as an add-on to number twenty to thirty-one. I have twenty-eight.
Well, there's been the sign plans, which are off the agenda. I don't know what your schedule looks like.
Twenty-nine, Anthony, what is it?
Hampton Shipyard Marina and Restaurant, to schedule the pre-submission conference for January 22nd, 2026.
Pre-submission conference, January 22nd. Motion by Kate. Second by Gloria, and all in favor? Post-extension, six in favor, one absent. Okay, want to then go back, Anthony, to you? Thank you for reminding me, I had no idea.
I only reminded you because Candace texted me.
Great. Do we have to close the work session? Yes, so we're closing the work, thank you Gloria. We're closing the work session, we're going back into our afternoon session. And number four, which is 1052 Noyak Path.
So everybody remembers this, I'll just be real quick. This was the one where we looked at a covenant amendment. There was a restriction on this, no further subdivision, and he wanted to do a two-lot subdivision. He doesn't have two houses here, but there's the existing residence back here, and then a pool house with the pool. And considering this, because they comply with zoning, so there was no zoning issues in terms of the covenant. The analysis was, how much clearing could they get? And so based on that analysis, a two-lot subdivision would net them, and it's in the resolution, approximately 18,000 more square feet in clearing than the property as a whole. So when we did the analysis, the applicant agreed, since we're around 56,000 total permitted, he would limit the lots to 28,000 square feet each and keep the clearing then, where it would be here as the property as a whole. So that's how I did the resolution. So actually, if you just go to the back, the second page, because we've looked at this many times, I recommend approval of the covenant amendment for Lot Four of the revised subdivision map of Antoinette Butttonow, was approved in eighty-four. To eliminate the no-further subdivision restrictions for Lot Four, subject to the following conditions: Submission of an amended declaration of covenant restrictions reflecting this change and indicating that any future two-lot subdivision of the subject property will limit the clearing to 28,000 square feet per lot. Then, of course, the submission of the title certification, the mortgage consent, approval of the legal docs, and then the filing of the new covenant with the county clerk.
Just reading your bullet points.
Oh, yeah, we usually put them in. Big thing with this one, which was vastly different than some of the other ones, is that we had something that completely conformed to zoning. We get a lot of these no-further, and then they go and get invariances. Here, since he was agreeable, we have two large lots. The structures are, it's very steep slopes here, so you will find these two structures are on the areas around the slopes. We'll get upgraded septic systems and everything else, and maintain the clearing. So at the end of the day, it didn't, it didn't seem to be a.
So this is just for covenant amendment?
Just the covenant amendment.
Any questions? Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, six in favor. Seth, you have an inet subdivision?
That one, it's not going to be heard today. I have no, I didn't receive the.
So number five is off the agenda. Claire is not here. Anthony, you want to do Petra Dura? We have applicants here? Yeah. Welcome.
Who are you?
Have your name for the record?
Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal.
There's two attachments to that. Everyone's familiar with the bocce ball courts. More time on bocce ball courts than anybody ever anticipated.
Yes.
Let Anthony give.
And probably a lot more report here that's probably necessary for bocce ball courts. If you go to the draft staff report, let me just turn you to page three, okay? Because let's, let's just get to the, cut to the chase and get to what we're talking about here. So just to remind the board, you got the restaurant, and then they had the second use, they have some bocce ball tournaments. And they do them on certain nights, right, Kevin?
Yes, only Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And so we had, a neighbor came out during the hearing, and she was nice enough and really didn't want to stop them, but she wanted some things addressed, right, because of noise and everything. So here's what I sort of came up with, if you look at this, you know, some of the things that we can impose. And I should point out to the board that the last site plan for this, which was completely CO'd, in fact, did have one bocce ball court on the approved site plan. So there was some acknowledgement of the bocce ball court at the time. Obviously, there's two there, and we're trying to, you know, piece it together now, so. But if you look, you know, given the complaint, some of the, you know, bocce ball tournaments to end by 9:00 P.M. There shall be no live music DJs or bands and no outdoor speakers, which I believe the applicant wants to speak to you about. The outdoor service area, which is this sitting here, would have to be relocated to be, really, it's got to be 50 feet from this property at minimum. That's, that's what the setback is from the residential property, it's only.
Or moved to behind.
Yeah, that's right, you know, somewhere back, closer to the, to the commercial. And I think they have the room there, there's no houses, you know. So that, that structure has got to be relocated. The outdoor service area shall be limited to the bocce ball use with no permanent use of the outdoor area for dining or a bar without approval by the planning board. Of course, that's because there's parking that gets generated as a result of that stuff. Lighting for the bocce ball courts shall be limited to the temporary string lighting that is currently being used and shall be turned off by 9:00 P.M. Parking, so, you know, we have a parking, there's no parking requirement for this type of use, and it's hard to apply something. They had a requirement for, I think it was eighty-six spaces, they have ninety on the site. You know, what I say in here is that, you know, a total of eighty-six parking spaces are required and a total of ninety are provided. Although this is considered a second use, the applicant has indicated that tournament attendees are often patrons of the restaurant, thus parking is adequate despite it being used pretty heavy. There are no specific parking requirements for the use, nor does it appear to be that additional parking, based on occupancy of the outdoor area, would be appropriate here. Therefore, to further address parking for a second use. Therefore, to further address parking for a second use, I say that the planning board A, staff shall monitor and manage parking lot when it becomes crowded. Two, identify the four extra parking spaces and note them for tournament attendees. Again, I repeated a consideration of providing staff and security during tournament time to enforce the rules. That's sort of what I came up with. I wasn't really sure what else I could, unless the board had some other conditions.
You can specify maybe a few spots for bocce court-
Yeah, and that's what it says, you have the four extra identifying. I think Kevin, the one issue was the, the outdoor music.
Yes, well, if I go down the, go down this real quick. The outdoor, so, well over a year ago, actually, when there was a previous owner of the restaurant, I'm to a different owner obviously by now, but that, we stopped all the DJ because that was a main complaint of the closest neighbor about the music. And it was, I told him a million times, it's too loud. We don't need it, besides the fact, because you're playing bocce, it's not a concert. It's bocce, it's background music, George had heard it when he was there, I have videos. It's, it's just a very, it's basically now, what we have is one speaker on the top of the, the outdoor bar area. But that isn't even really going to be an issue, because if you look at the site plan now, first of all, this outdoor kitchen in the back here is, hasn't been used in over a year and is not going to be when we move this, is not even going to be, there's not, hasn't been food there in two years. And basically, all it was, was a pizza oven. If somebody wants food, they have to go into the restaurant and then order it, and somebody will bring it out to them, but that's about it, there is no-
So we will want that either removed or moved?
Yeah, well, this, so yes, we understand this has to be moved, and then to get to the 50-foot, we have to go on a northeast angle. So with the one speaker, we're now actually, this is the house that was in question, this is the one, the people that were here and had the objections, their house is like, right here.
You're right next to a lot of residences.
Yeah, and this house is completely, as you can see how far, it's much further setback, and so is the next one. So the one speaker, which is again, at a very low level, is just background noise now, it's not even, you know, it's music, but it's not, we're not blasting anything, there's no DJs, there's no live bands, and there won't be, that's not the point of this. The point of it is, as we had discussed, is just to drum up more business for the restaurant, which is what we have. The, just on-
What about bar service?
Well, there's, there's only a couple, you just sit there and have a drink while you're waiting for your, your game to come up.
Is there, are there drinks served out of that structure inside?
Outside?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there is a bar service in that building?
Yes, has been for as long as it's been there. In the beginning, it wasn't even used, then they started utilizing it. Again, we're on, so now in this time, we're on to our third owner of the business. So, first owner put it in, didn't utilize it at all, just sat there. Second one, not only did he utilize it, went completely overboard. Music, trying to do food with the pizza oven, bands, DJs, you know, and understandably, if I was living right there, I would be a little upset, too.
So you have plenty of space in the back and you've got all of that greenery back there?
Correct.
So that has to be moved away from the residential side?
Right, we know that, we have to at least do, I was there actually earlier, and again, I just wanted to visualize it, but yes, we have tons of room back there. Moving it is not the issue, but we're not going to be doing that outdoor kitchen, that's not being moved at all.
But I'm still trying to understand if there's bar service, is that coming out of the restaurant, or is there an outside bar?
No, it's just an outside bar for people who are either playing or watching bocce. And it's only open while bocce is there, during the rest of the time-
And where, where is that on the site plan?
Right there.
It's that little building.
Okay, so that's-
You want that moved.
But are you calling that a pizza oven?
No, no, in the back of it, if you look in the site plan on the back.
I don't have that in front of me, so.
If you can, go look it up. If you, if you notice, there was a pizza oven, it's still there, but it's not getting moved, so right this little section here, they were making pizzas and heating up, I guess heroes and whatnot.
And the bar?
It's attached to it?
This is going to get moved, but this is not coming with it, that's getting banned and completely-
You're removing it though, from the site?
Yes, we're going to remove it completely.
I think the question, relating to your, your question, is whether we actually allow a bar service to continue to operate, which you're, which you're saying you want to continue operating a bar service, even when you move it to, to the, to the back of the bocce courts?
Yeah, just, just, it's, again, it's only used either on a weekend for an event, or, which is very rarely, they're trying to do more, but they haven't been very successful with that, or the one or two nights that we have bocce, which, because not every night, not every week is now two nights. It's, it's started at Wednesdays only, got pretty busy. For them to break it up a little bit, we did Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but now the plan is probably just going back to Wednesday nights.
I think the question is that we're asking, is this a permitted use? Is it an additional use? What?
No, I mean, we normally consider it accessory, too. And we've, we've done that before. The, the, the issue that I'm trying to raise here is I don't necessarily have a problem that it's being used per se to, for refreshments, you know, while people are waiting for bocce. The point, what I was trying to make is in here, is it can't, it cannot have permanent seating, towards dining and stuff like that, because that does create a parking issue. If it's remaining accessory, too, and it's being used for the bocce ball, of course, I have less concern than for it.
Should it end at 9:00 PM when the bocce ends?
That's what I say, 9 o'clock.
Does that say that in here?
Oh, well, I'm, we could say that.
Fourth bullet says, can't be used.
I don't think there's anything about bar service in there.
It did, it said, the outdoor service area be relocated.
And then I say the outdoor service area shall be limited to the bocce ball use.
Anthony, you don't want that, not less than 50 feet for the residential, we discussed moving it.
No, it, no, it can't be any, it can't be-
It's right now 27, the minimum setback from a residentially-owned property was 50 feet. So I'm just referencing that it's going to be relocated, it can't be less than 50 feet from the property line. We could, we could fix that if you want something different.
We want it relocated.
We are, but to relocate it, we're going to, we're going to relocate it to the fifth, minimum of 50 foot.
No, we're recommending that you move it to the other, get it away from the residences, move it behind the bocce court area.
I'm going to change that to say relocate the outdoor service area to be behind the bocce ball courts.
Right.
That way we can just get rid of this 50-foot.
So it's not going to stay along this western property boundary, it's going to go more behind bocce ball courts itself, so you're further away, as far as you can residentially make it.
Yeah. Okay.
So what are you asking for, Kevin? You want a speaker? Is that what you're asking for?
I'm asking, yes, for one speaker, the only thing is the time, which at 9 o'clock, occasionally, if, if the first game, so we, they technically do four to five games a night. If the first one runs late, they all run late. So sometimes it runs to 9:45. That's as late as it usually goes, so. I don't, I don't want it to be an issue that we run late one, and it doesn't happen every time, but it does happen occasionally.
So who monitors this, Kevin?
What's that?
Who monitors this?
The owners have their own security, actually. They have a manager out there every night. He manages the lighting, he manages the music. If for some reason somebody decides they need it louder, he makes them turn it down. That was not, previously, was never done before. This, the newest owners are the, are the ones that have taken charge of that, and they literally have a manager out there every night.
I mean, if there's, if there's no loud speaker, there's just no problem. It does, it can't be-
Well, it's not allowed, the speaker's this big.
But if there's none, there's no issue with how loud it is.
I, I don't agree with having speakers at all on the site. I've been, I've been there on two occasions, Kevin, once you met me, and I went back one other night. I didn't let you know I was coming, I just happened to go by, just to see how, what was happening. And, you know, on both occasions, there's a speaker playing. Now, you leave a speaker there, people can, people can now work with portable speakers that can play louder than, than the speaker that you have there, that could be an issue as well. And the fact is that you have probably at least 75 people there congregating around the bar, drinking, yelling when, when the bocce game is in progress, and, and somebody makes a shot or doesn't make a shot, there's yelling and, and loud voices being raised. There is lighting, you had the string lighting, there are in fact a couple of spotlights, because that lighting apparently may not be enough for the courts and the play to happen, but there are a couple of spotlights that were facing towards the residential property, which I can see from when I drove down the private, I didn't get too far because I realized there was going on a private entrance, so I didn't really, but I can simply see the light intruding on the side.
Just seeing, once, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but once we move that, obviously, so my point, I would kind of move it on the angle, I don't want it facing this way, because then it's still-
So you did plan to have spotlights as well as the string lighting?
No, no spotlights.
No, that's going to go into a revised resolution.
I'm saying there are spotlights right now, floodlights, at present, on the structure facing along, along the bocce courts.
As a matter of fact, do we not need the spotlights? We're actually looking into doing portable lighting that just is directed right down onto the courts, because a lot of, the problem with the lighting that we've been having is, A, they're not very bright bulbs, they do light it up somewhat, but some of the older competitors can't see from one end of the court to the other.
Which is why I think you probably had the floodlights.
Right, so we had the ones, I don't know when you were there, but, so what we did in the last two weeks of the year was we just put the, they're, they're only about this high, and then they just faced down onto the court, so it, right.
I went there about, about a month after you and I met, that, that one.
So that's probably-
You know, and, and, you know, the, the other thing that happens, which is natural function of having, you know, 50, 75 people outdoors, I can't believe that all of them go to the restaurant, quite honestly, because there's a lot of people there. You know, people, they're drinking, they're having a good time, there's people walking down along the property boundaries by the cars, talking, smoking, you know, making noise in general. Now, it's not loud noise, but if you live next to a property like that, it's a, it's an annoyance for, for three hours, two, three hours of, of a night, two nights a week. And then the idea that this is going to go, well, you know, if you run late, it's going to go an extra 45 minutes or an hour, that, that, that's unacceptable to me. If you're having this, it should be finished at 9 o'clock, and if the games have to be stopped at 9 o'clock, then the game has to be stopped at 9 o'clock.
I mean, when you do a term in the middle of the week-
We have, we have a time constraint here, but in keeping with what George is saying, I totally agree. Every other sports facility that we have, we say, no outdoor speakers, it's clear. It's not wishy-washy, it's in the code.
And it's not dependent on the owner, because you just described three different owners dealing with sound differently, so.
So my sense would be, my thinking, George as well, that there not be an outdoor speaker.
At 9 o'clock.
At 9 o'clock.
And that includes any portable speakers brought inside by, by bedrooms?
Right. We're not going to get ahead of this by little, tiny, taking little tiny bites at it.
And, and I don't think we should be depending upon the goodwill of the owner. I mean, I think it's great that the owner is trying to do things the right way, but he may not be the same person next year.
So let's, let's talk about the lighting, then, just lighting of the bocce courts, right? That's what you want to do?
Yes, that's, that's all.
So the light, so let's write that in. That lighting should be directed only.
So does that mean the string lighting goes away then? Or you-
Was that, was not bright, that was just decorative.
Can I just, Kevin, you, I'm going to, there's no way I'm going to revise this here today like this, no chance, no how. So you're going to either have to give us an extension, but you don't sound like you have votes right now. So I need to fix this resolution for next time. Can we do that?
Yeah, I mean, you got to keep moving, so.
It's November, so it's not-
No, I know, I didn't listen.
I'm, I'm not going to be-
We've already been going long enough, so.
We'll, I'll, I'll come in with the revised document, and let's just do an extension till December 11.
Extension. You want to do it to, just the first week in January, or no?
Yeah, well, let me, I'm, let me just, I know I have trustees and stuff that week, I'm just trying to confirm. The 11th.
Or we can do January.
Either or, it's up to you guys.
Anthony, what's more con-
January's wide open, and so is actually the 11th, but I would say January.
January 8th, okay, so an extension to January 8th. That'll give you some more time.
Yeah, and I can, I can also do-
I hear everybody loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you.
11th, you said, right, on 11?
January 8th. January 8th.
Yeah, it's the second, New Year's Day, the first.
So the demolition, Claire, you want to move to that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Jackie, did you vote on that?
Oh, yes, we did vote. Motion by George for the extension to January 8th, second by Tom, all in favor. Post-extension, six in favor, one absent. So we're moving on to six, 10 South Hampton Jackson demolition.
We're ripping down the police-
It's not the police department, it's, it's a small building next to it.
Oh, it sounded like it was the police department.
You're probably familiar with it. It's one of those buildings that, you know, we've been PC'd together for the last-
I saw that and thought, finally, they're going to implement my plan from 20 years ago, but I guess they're not.
It's the health police department.
No, it's a small building next to it. All I can tell you is as a union president, I got calls from the people who would be inside saying, please help me. So, it's time.
So this is just a dump for the demolition?
Yes, yeah.
I don't think anybody is interested in that.
And they're not replacing it or anything?
No, not, not yet, and then you'd see it, you'd see it if they were, when they were replacing it, yes. So this would be a document for the demolition.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor. Six in favor, one absent.
Easiest meeting of the day for you, Nick.
Anthony, want to do Charlie Fox, number eight?
You'll find in that there's the staff report and then the resolution. Everybody knows the property we're talking about here on 39, Charlie Fox, a retail cannabis dispensary that we did do a pre-submission on. First documents, the staff report, it's an existing site, an existing building with existing parking, it's in the Highway Business Zoning District. And then, of course, I recall, we have the two school lots that are joined the property, but are not on the same, on the same street. We had a hearing, actually just the last meeting, and it was closed with a five-day, no comments were received. Should point out to the board that there was a hearing at the zoning board as well for the sign, and nobody showed up for that as well. It's a Type II action under SECPRA. We did send this to the engineer, and he came back with some comments. We'd ignored the first one about 1995, he was looking at two different maps, so we have something correct. Provided 30-foot-long asphalt apron to match the existing apron and reduce the gravel and depict a path to the building, I guess, you know, from-
Where are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page two.
Page two of the draft report. Okay.
And obviously, Tom will have to sign off on the final maps. The Office of Fire Prevention came in and made pretty standard comments here, and of course, they note that they would be doing a final review. Let me just see what they said about, not less than 20 feet, okay. I will add, when we get to the resolution, compliance with Fire District, I forgot to add that in, there are all those standard requirements. We didn't get anything from the DPW on their pending, and so we always will make that a condition of the approval. Has the special end specific standards, so going through the general standards will be in harmony and promote the general purpose and intent of this chapter. As we say in there, the non-medical cannabis retail is consistent with land and zoning and land use regulations pertaining to such uses. The use is in an existing commercial building with existing parking along the commercial corridor of 39. Is the plot area sufficient? Again, it's just over a half acre, and it's a reuse of an existing building and parking, so lot size isn't a question, and they're, and they're meeting their parking requirements. C, will the use, the use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties, particularly where they're in a different district. We note here, although the project location is immediately adjacent to Tukahoe School, the planning board finds the proposed cannabis use is not on the same street as the school, cannabis use is not on the same street as the school, which is where that whole distance separation comes into play. It's got to be on the same street, and our code mimics the Office of Cannabis Management. Significant existing buffering on the school properties and a large separation distance between the school building and the cannabis dispensary such that access or interaction by schoolchildren is realistically avoided. So you'll see here, even though we're adjoining, this whole property is completely wooded. And actually, this runs about 125 feet back here, immediately adjacent to the school, and then the separation from, let's say, the entrance to the entrance is over 500 feet. So I think, based on that, I think the standard is being met.
Anthony, on C, I think I would just ask that it's, you know, not on the same street per the Office of Cannabis Management, OCM.
And the town code.
And the town code, yes, absolutely. Is the site particularly suitable? Again, the use is permitted by special exception under HV zoning district, subject to those standards. E, the characteristics of the proposed use are such, are not such that its location would be unsuitedly near a church, school, theater, recreation area, or other place of public assembly. Again, although it's, you know, it's not on the same street, it is located near the school, but for the same reasons, the separation distance, the buffer is.
OCM.
And we'll put in the OCM and town code reference for that as well. F talks about conforming to the definition. The town code doesn't have a definition of non-medical cannabis retail use, however, this is consistent with what would be accepted as a definition of a cannabis retail, and, and consistent, I guess, with, you know, any reasonable definition by the Office of Cannabis Management. Access facilities, G, access facilities, actually, this is a mistake. Access facilities are existing in accordance with the site plan in 2007. No, no left turns on the County Route 39. I didn't. Dave, did we have that discussion?
I don't think that we discussed.
You know, so that, that was the only one I really actually didn't address. But the access facilities are existing, so we do note that. Curb cuts have been approved, so they're in the process of dealing with DPW. We haven't heard back from them, but everything was referred. Off-street parking and loading spaces, the site plan, based on the size of the building, fourteen spaces are required, fifteen are provided, and that includes the requisite handicap parking spaces. J talks about adequate buffers and screening. So I say here, although additional buffering cannot be substantially provided given existing site conditions, the planning board notes there is a large separation distance between the school building and the cannabis dispensary, with one of the school lots completely wooded and the school building a site with an approximately 125-foot wooded area along the common property line. Further, the planning board will require the applicant maintain the existing six-foot-high fence along the school property lines, and that they remain opaque or combined with a secondary barrier such as dense planting if possible. The barbed wire along the top of the fence shall be removed. The barbed wire up there.
Is that new?
No, it's been there. I think it's been there right there. The collection of stormwater, again, this is an existing site. There's not appear to be any site changes that would warrant additional drainage, and Tom certainly didn't raise any issues. No outdoor sales, lot rental, equipment storage, or display area. Again, none of that is proposed with this, and it won't be permitted. And then M says, the proposed use recognizes further specific conditions, which we are now going to go through. So A, B, and C are the separation distances, so I don't address them individually. So if you go to page seven of this report, right above D there, it responds to all three of those, and it says, "There are no schools, churches, or community centers on the same street as the cannabis dispensary and within the required separation distances." And I think Jackie will adding there the.
Per the Office of Cannabis Management.
Although the project location is immediately adjacent to Tuckahoe School, again, the planning board finds the proposed cannabis use is not on the same street. There's existing significant buffering and a large separation between the two uses, and that it can be reasonably expected that the schoolchildren won't interact with the business. I think that's fair. D, a non-medical cannabis dispensary should not be within a thousand feet of another one. This one is not. And, so, and they have their proximity protection from the state, and you can go to the state website and see. I'm going to go there mapping them out. E, the traffic analysis. You will see in here on page eight, I say in here that the planning board has reviewed these, and we didn't ask for a traffic study. I actually stand corrected. We did review a traffic study for this one at an earlier stage, so in fact, we did get a traffic study. So I'm going to note that traffic study in here, and that the conclusions, you know, indicated that the use doesn't generate significant, and so I will reference them there. That was my fault. F talks about the, the parcel shall be of sufficient size and shape, has to provide the required buffer and transition yard areas, to screen development from adjacent parcels. I just say, C, comment below item G, because then G goes on to talk about the hundred-foot transitional setback. So it just, when the regulations were prepared, it just says, "A hundred-foot transitional setback from residential properties," but the specifications of that are not identified. Unlike our other section of the code where we deal with transitional yards, it's very, it defines what that means and how that's, you know, applied. We didn't do that here. So I have to address it. So I say in here, "The subject property adjoins residentially zoned properties along the rear property line, which are the Tuckahoe School properties, and are not in proven residences. The planning board finds that adherence to the most strict interpretation of this requirement may be difficult to accomplish, given site existence conditions." So if you made an argument that you're subject to a hundred-foot transition from this property line, not going to be able to meet it. And so, the planning board finds that adherence would be difficult. However, the overall intent and spirit of the law to protect residential properties has been met, and that potential conflict from the nearby school is not likely, and the reasoning behind it here is the vacant residential property is completely wooded. Again, we have the big wooded area here, 125 feet deep, over 500 feet from the rear property line to the school building, and again, the existing six-foot-high fence along the school property line to be maintained. So I think when you take into those factors, I think the intent of having a proper buffer between properties, you know, has been, has been met. H talks about the appearance and layout of the building. This is an existing building with no proposed changes at this time, but if they have any, they'd be subject to further planning and architectural review.
What about the canopies that are up there now?
They've gone to the ARB, I believe. The signage, right? You dealing that with the signage? So the signage does, yes, and I do note that in here, I believe. Otherwise, I will correct, actually, I'm going to correct that in there. I'll note that. Gloria. Parking, I, yes, the parking has been met. Outdoor speakers, there's not going to be any outdoor speakers here, so that's good. Pedestrian circulation plan, again, this was an existing site, and we'll see with the DPW if they require anything from them in the front. L, drive-through windows, there's going to be no drive-through windows. They're prohibited. M, on page nine, talks about signage. On page 10, signage is subject to review and approval by the planning board. Depending application before the zoning board of appeals for signage cannot be approved by the planning board until and unless the ZBA grants a necessary relief. So this board understands the signage is not being approved as part of this. When they're done with the ZBA, I'll bring it back to you to do that separately. And talks about the permits and approvals from the Office of Cannabis Management, and we always make that a condition, that they have to submit everything they receive. O talks about the security system requirements, and these are required of the OCM. So a detailed safety management plan must be submitted, which I believe they already did. And of course, the applicant shall take all the necessary steps to discourage and correct objectionable conditions, and this includes, you know, smoking, noise disturbance, drinking, loitering, and littering, such like that. P, the operating hours are from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., so obviously, that's a condition, and I believe the delivery services are limited to that, limited to that as well. And Q, the planning board shall incorporate all applicable fire marshal requirements into any approval. And of course, when they go in for a building permit, and the fire marshal's already been dealing with this application, they get a further review at that time, so we know that. You know, any remaining issues, lighting, we will just note that all lighting shall be projected downward and not spill over to properties. Outdoor lighting fixtures shall not be installed at a height greater than 10 feet. Engineering, the site plan shall conform the requirements of the town engineer. Dumpster, they do show dumpster in there, so fencing and screening detail shall be provided. Does not appear this requires an upgrade to the septic system. I don't think there's any new mechanicals, but if there are, screen mechanicals on the roof or the ground. And we always like to put in our sustainability blurb, if they could incorporate. This is an existing building. It's not likely to happen here, but. Then the second one is just the resolution of approval. The grade-out first, whereas I just have to put in the correct date on that, so I left it blank. So the first resolve is to actually approve the staff report, and the, actually, it's, we adopt the staff report on the first resolve and approve the special exception application. There's two resolves here, so. So the special exception for the cannabis use and the conditions are, they have to submit a safety management plan, and that's in accordance with the Office of Cannabis Management, and that's who wanted to really review these things to make sure they're complying with the standards. I believe they've submitted their safety management plan to us. The applicant shall submit licenses and/or permits that have been obtained from New York State Office of Cannabis Management. The applicant shall comply with all security and code-compliant lighting on-site to ensure safety. Exterior lighting shall be, you know, it's got to protect the parking lot, the adjacent areas, but we do note in here, and Dennis Finerty brought this up, shall all be town code compliant and dark side compliant. So we really don't know what exactly it is they're requiring, but we'll note that they have to be town code compliant. Areas to be covered by security cameras, including but not limited to dispensing areas, storage areas, doors, parking lots, delivery areas. E, all signage is subject to planning board and architectural review board approval, and so that, that's noted in here, and that would have to come to the planning board as well. The applicant shall take all reasonable steps to discourage and correct objectionable conditions on-site, that people aren't sitting around consuming the product, creating noise, disturbance, et cetera. On-site consumption of cannabis products is prohibited. Drive-through window service is prohibited. Hours of operation on-site for the on-site retailer shall be limited to 10 to 9, and the delivery services shall be subject to the same hours of 10 to 9. Then, the actual approval of the site plan application, I got to fix the wording because I said site plan special exception. We break it out into the two. One changes to the site plan per the town engineer, so they're asking, he's asking for the 30-foot asphalt apron in the front there, and a path to the building from the front as well. Then I'm going to add compliance with the Office of Fire Prevention, so I'll add that as a third change to the site plan. Provide a final floor plan for the retail and storage area, and sign and stamp by a design professional. General conditions of the approval, all final maps shall be signed and sealed by the design professional. All signage is subject to planning board review and approval. Screening of all HVAC and mechanical systems. The design of the lighting or any lighting shall be dark side compliant. No dawn to dusk, no dusk dawn fixtures. No additional lighting without planning board approval. Any lighting required by the OCM must conform to the requirements of the town code. No fixtures higher than 10 feet, and obtain all permits and approvals from the Highway Department and the Superior County DPW as may be applicable. Pre-construction meeting with the engineering division, and then to be completed prior to the signature, town engineer approval of the final maps, the submission of a affidavit indicating compliance with the conditions of this approval, and of course, the six maps to be signed by Gloria.
David, do you have any questions? Any questions from the board? So Anthony, you want this in two actions now, so.
No, I, I.
Christine, what do you think? To approve the special exception?
I think you could do it.
I can think of just take that. You approve the site plan special exception and adopt the staff report. You're fine.
So a motion to approve the site plan special exception of Charlie Fox.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
All those extensions. Six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Claire, you've got the next. Is Claire here?
She's got like eight of them in a row.
She's got quite a few.
You are, you're the star of this, this week.
I know, I try not to have any.
Do you want to go right into Bridgehampton comments?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Barnes &amp; Noble?
You have some map plans, right? So Barnes &amp; Noble, about this time last year, they had put a sign in.
It's too big.
It's too big. So the applicant is here with some considerations for you to consider. This is one of those units that are larger, so they can have a more, not the typical green and gold sign, but the sign is at the fascia, so the perspective is important in terms of like, you had said that sign was too large for the fascia. None of them are that long.
They have to change their name.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. The longest one is 12 feet wide, and then that's a smaller unit, but they're 12 feet wide. The longest colored one, the one with the different color, is Walgreens, and that's 11. So I suggested to them, they go back to the 12 in terms of the length.
Is that what this is?
The last one.
No, no, it's the last page. The last page is the, similar to the existing sign that's there now. It's black with gold.
Ah, okay.
So.
And that's reduced in size?
Yeah.
Yeah, to comply? Okay, well, if it's reduced in size and it complies, I don't think we have any issues. We had the issue because it was oversized.
But it's the green and gold as opposed to?
Oh, no, it's their own colors.
I'm looking at green and gold.
No, 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 it's the next, go to the last page.
Yeah. I only have the black and white, so you have to.
Oh, that looks so much better.
What color is that?
Take it down.
I'm hard-facing that all the time.
Yeah.
Happy to have it there.
Obviously, a miscommunication on the square footage and how we calculated the original size of the sign.
Thank you for complying.
Yes. Yeah, I will, I will. The length in this case is what?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven and change, eleven and six, I think.
Perfect.
Perfect.
And we'll do a resolution.
When are you going to fix, change it?
Soon as possible.
Thank you.
A motion to approve.
Yes.
Go and get it.
It's not, it's not a lit sign, so it's just pin letters, so we just got to get up, patch it up. But as soon as we get a permit, we'll get in there and do it.
I shop there every week, so.
Wonderful. Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor. All those extensions, six in favor, one absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Claire, you want to go to J. O. Riffkin?
Yeah, this is easy.
Bond release.
Release of the maintenance bond in the amount of $31,500 in connection with their landscaping.
Okay, motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
All those extensions, six in favor, one absent.
And then likewise, flying point one and two, which is in the corner of Two Montauk, that's the medical buildings.
The Ferrells.
Office buildings. Likewise, the release of the maintenance bond, which is $56,000.
Motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
All those extensions, six in favor, one absent.
So we saw Kinnick Cove at the last meeting, and as they were leaving, they said that they have funding for four EV chargers on the property, and they would like permission to install them, and that funding runs out by the end of the year, which is why I pushed it back on the agenda for this meeting. It's funding from Porsche, copies of their letter.
Funding from?
Yes, please.
Funding from where?
Porsche. To get to actually install four, for free, chargers on the property.
Like the car?
Yes, the car.
Agreement, 2015. Between the government and Porsche and Volkswagen. Had to do with software.
So where on the site plan are they, would they?
Yep, I have the site plan. There's four of them. They're in the front, but there is a fence on the property that pretty much screens them from visibility from the main road.
And these are car chargers?
They're car EV chargers.
I have a picture. Unfortunately, I didn't.
They have it.
Oh, you have it? Oh, Claire did. Okay, thank you.
High-speed chargers? Are they high-speed chargers?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Are they high-speed chargers?
I believe they are, but I don't know the exact specs on them.
See where the handicap space is? There's four, one, two, three, four.
I think putting in EV chargers is great. I'm a little concerned, because we had concerns about this parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we never really resolved it.
They put them in, and then we might find out that there's a problem with the parking lot, that.
Well, they can be moved, though, right?
That's.
Not easily, because you're running high, you know, high-capacity cables, high-impulse cables to these spots.
We had that discussion, though, when we last met, which was what, last week? You know, regarding the number of parking spaces and how he parks during the winter versus during the summer.
Yeah, but that isn't how.
That was not resolved.
That isn't how we.
No, I understand that.
This was not resolved at all.
Where, I see a picture with a fence, but where do I? Sorry. I'm overwhelmed with paper.
Right here.
Thank you.
So the fence is along. This is a fence, right along behind that here. It's a four-foot-high wood fence that is here. There is an opening here, and these are the chargers here.
This is just an example of what it looks like from someplace else.
Claire, I think it's just premature. So Claire, I think it's just premature, given the fact that we have so many questions on this application.
I mean, unless they understand this is at their own risk, and we may have them move them. You know, but...
I understand that. What I would ask is that, is that you approve it? We understand. Let the client decide, you know, if he wants to, if he wants to do it at his own risk.
Approval is worth something.
Subject to a letter, an authorized letter from the applicant, understanding that we may, you may require them to relocate them.
Just seems like procedurally silly.
Going forward and going back.
It's just, I understand them asking for...
It's a nice opportunity, but you know, if you apply for a grant and then you're not shovel-ready with your approvals, usually you wouldn't have the opportunity for that grant. I've experienced that personally.
He will lose, he will lose out on the opportunity.
Yes.
If that letter makes it clear.
Yeah, I mean, Porsche's, Porsche's...
Remind me the problem with the parking, is it specific to the area where they're talking about putting the EV chargers?
Well, throughout the entire site, because there's no, there's no to being close to them with parking spots they need. He was making a case that, oh, well, you know, he manages the parking by stacking them, you know, triple and double the parking, but we don't approve parking that way. We don't approve parking that says you can, you can park two rows behind everybody else and you could manage it, because that's, that's not the way parking regulations look in it.
And it is in this area, that front parking lot.
Okay. So tell us about this grant and what's an alternative to it if you don't get it? You know, Porsche is not going to go away, right?
No, but apparently, the, there's this national program where Porsche and Volkswagen were obligated, we did this with another client in Brookhaven, obligated to spend about $2 billion on installation of these EV charging stations. This was an agreement that the government...
This was last administration.
Previous administration.
Yes.
December 31st, December 31st, all these grants are going away.
And all of that is, is done by the end of this, the car stuff was done at the end of September. Everything else is done at the end of December.
Right.
That's what the letter that we received said.
Well, that's what the federal government has said.
That it would have to be done by the end of, end of December.
Right. Well, I think there's a reluctance here because we, the parking is one of the biggest issues here, and these take up, four of these take up considerable amount of parking space.
Take up four spaces.
Take up four spaces, right?
Four spaces.
In an already jammed lot.
Well, it doesn't prohibit somebody else from parking there. There would never be a prohibition. You can park there whether you're charging or not.
You're charging or not.
I don't think we're going to put a sign up saying that it's only for EV car chargers.
And you're not, definitely not. Because you need it for your business.
Is it, is it, are these charging stations specific to VWs and...
No, no.
They're universal.
They're universal, and you can't charge. In other words, you can't charge money to allow, allow the use.
Say that again?
They're free.
They're free.
Anybody?
Yes. Well, I think we have to figure out a way, because we don't want them to become, you know, the charging station. But, but yes, it has to be for free. That's what the agreement says.
Do you have a copy of that grant that you should submit?
Sorry, already, all I had was the first letter. Yeah, I didn't have this, which is a, you know.
Well, it does say free charging to your patrons, not necessarily to the public.
I don't, I don't think we're going to invite the public in to use it unless the board directs us otherwise.
Well, I don't think, I don't know, but it's not like it's free, free. It's free to the patrons only if this...
They cannot charge. They cannot charge whoever uses it.
Once they're installed, they become the property of the owner.
Correct.
So, I don't know how we proceed here. We have some issues with this application.
I just thought, just that you were informed that they had a timeframe on this, but if you're not inclined to do it, we will tell it.
Okay.
I mean, the parking spaces are still there.
And we don't, and we don't feel like if they can assume the risk of moving, that we, we let them use the dollars?
The site plan process exists for a reason, to look at a comprehensive view of a site and to undermine that by allowing like, just, oh, we have this opportunity. To me, it feels like we're undermining the process.
They relayed this information to me. I knew it was time sensitive.
But we're not undermining the process. If they take, if they assume the risk, when we do resolve the parking, of moving it at their own cost, then we're simply taking advantage of a grant that is ended, a federal grant. I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Oh, he parks them and he double parks them.
I'm going to call a vote on the board?
You want to wait? You want to consider? I mean, they do have the, until the end of the year, you have the 11th, but...
Or at least get a building permit.
I was just thinking, Claire, Jackie, whatever reporting on would be...
Investigation of the site plan by that time. They would not put in an application.
The application's in, but it's, there's still, you want to use verification. There's things to be done, yeah.
We needed information from trustees about what's happening out there. I think if we're going to vote on this, we have to be clear that if we, if this is approved or not approved, it, one of the conditions will be strongly be that the...
Thank you.
Welcome.
You know, the applicant cannot, will have to assume the risk and cannot use the fact that they're already there as an argument that some, that, you know, other things should happen.
That's fair.
So a letter from the owner of the property saying that they assume the risk of possibly relocating or required to remove. Okay.
Like, why don't you workshop that with our council for the next meeting, and then the board could consider it with council's advice?
Yeah, okay. December 11th. We can get you a building permit on December 12th. If they approve it.
And you, you could certainly include language that indicates this in no way gives any approval to the existing plan that still is under review. Some language that...
But they just won't get the grant, you understand? I mean, Kate and I apply for lots of grants, you know, and a grant, someone who's granting, they want a, they want a definite yes or no, given and, and cooperation with all the agreements that they have, so it's one way or the other.
I'll draft an agreement and declare, Christine?
Yes, that'd be great.
So no vote?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will this be on?
December 11th.
December 11th.
We go again.
That's Claire's.
Yes, please.
Claire, you want to do Connor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number 13th, Connor Friedlander, Gateway 1.
So Connor Friedlander, at the last time we had this application on, there was, it was a work session. This is a... Now it's a 10-lot subdivision. Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Be everything.
Good, okay. So the...
Can you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Stephen Neroa with Aris Design, 38 Union Street.
Stephen?
Steven Neroa.
Neroa?
N-I-E-R-O-D-A.
With a D, okay. Carl Benicasa, we know.
Does he do the same thing or different things?
And we...
Greg Connor. K-O-N-N-E-Y-R.
With two N's.
It is, K-O-N-N, double N.
Here's the second one.
They run together.
We got a set.
So the last thing you saw, there was some direction given to the applicants that the code has changed, requiring a cluster plan with commercial subdivisions. So we had a work session, we talked about it. We've been working about the yield, what the yield plan looks like, and also the cluster plan, which is the second sheet.
The second sheet is the cluster.
Right.
This is the same.
Settle where we have?
There is a little difference. There's a slight difference.
Because it is, it's between the wetlands and the agricultural lands, prime agro soils. Yeah. The set is preserving and proposing an open space parcel that you see. The applicant likes the 10 lots, that's the one we're going to look at with regard to SECR purposes. The advantage to them with a cluster is that, you know, subx can be modified to create something a little bit more interesting in terms of access, roadways, those kinds of things. Whether this is the final cluster plan, you know, is something you can more bond during the preliminary process, but at least it gives a guidance that we can use to coordinate with the other interested agencies, in this case, or involved agencies, the health department. Sorry. Yes. So we have the basic information to commence SECR, and in this case, would be coordination with the involved agencies.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
This looks better.
Yeah.
Yeah, we converge into position yard here and up in all of these areas, which are very sensitive, both topographically and environmentally.
And that's all buffer around the block?
All buffer.
And where, the road out to the light?
It's not shown on here, but it, well, the road is going to, they're thinking of like, sort of a U in here and then out, egress only through the...
So the light's over there? That's what I was trying to...
Yeah, the light's right here.
Right. In the past...
I had the wrong light.
We've done this a few times. In the past, we've had, on the western side of the property, a right in and right out.
Mm-hmm, right in, right out, yeah.
Kind of like they have across street, like, the thing, and then the light, where the light is.
Well, the light will control it, too.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Same number of lots.
It's possible that if you get, you get a larger tenant in here, you could combine two lots or...
I get, that would be, it's site plan, and we'll go through the site plan process and giving some, yes, exactly, correct.
Good.
Parking's not going to be an issue, but in all, the roads that we're going to, the cross axes we're going to have.
And we have a hook in from Bridgehampton as well.
There'll be a hook right here.
Yeah.
And so what I also suggested that they do, which they do have some like basic, you know, concept plans about what would be development, that you'll look at that...
That'd be great.
With this NAGDAC or decision that you make, past, you know, whatever the secret determination is, so that you can have like a baseline. It'll be kind of like a G-E-I-S or, you know, general look-over. And if they follow it, then the process with SECR future will be easier for them, so.
So we're just...
Forty-five years of options to show you, right?
I remember a lot of them.
They'll all ring a bell when you see them again, right?
Ten lots.
Can we explain these two again, please?
Because it verbatim just says subdivision, nine lots into seven lots, so it's a little confusing.
Yes, that was the original, but when we...
That was the original. That's inaccurate on the...
Yes, it now is, now they're, we're encouraging you to do the cluster plan. So they said, well, they're cluster, great. Environment, they're entitled to 10 lots.
The top, you have on top is your cluster, okay.
Yes.
But that's the second, the second one in our sheet.
Use the yield plan.
The second page, the second page is the cluster.
It doesn't look that different, but...
The first one has the driveway coming with the cul-de-sac.
First one, yes, the road...
Yeah, and I guess, where is the road on this one?
The second one doesn't require a road, because it is a cluster. You have the ability to waive the requirement for the front yards setback of, you know, it's either 20 feet or 40-foot frontage. You have the ability to waive all those things. Whether that's how it's going to look is what you're going to investigate through SECR and the preliminary process. You have all that investigation.
But how do they get in there?
Easements.
Okay.
There'll be easements, and they'll be entitled to that.
And flag lots, I mean, these look like individual driveways?
Yes, but they won't be. It'll be one easement. And what I'm envisioning is like, he described it, like a horseshoe, where you'd be coming in or going out, that one east one, kind of similar to the commons across the street. They can only go right, or you can, you can kind of go left into there, but, and then only, the light will be the only way to act.
A little slip street or whatever they used to call them.
Exactly. And then we'll have tra, obviously, they have a traffic study that'll be investigated through this process, maybe have to be updated because this is a different plan, right?
Yeah, but the uses are the same, right?
Yeah, we'll look at that. Yeah, so.
So the biggest advantage of the cluster is preserving more land, and that's...
Yes, yes.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Yeah, and there's two things going on here. It's obviously farmlands, but 35% with wetlands being, I think the wetlands might be the priority, unfortunately. Achieving anything with the farmlands might be nothing bad. It is what it is.
And there's one residential lot?
It's proposed, yeah.
Yeah, south side.
No, no, very south.
The top of the pond, yes.
This one here, okay.
In that zone, you'll see the red line is, that's the zoning district.
See it, yeah, yeah.
All approved, great. See that? That was easy.
We're just starting.
Nice try.
We want to see all 25 years.
I don't got 25 left in me.
So we're commencing SECR?
Yes, commencing SECR. And the involved agencies identified, DOT and health departments at this point.
Okay.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
By George, second by Tom, all in favor. Noes abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
Claire, you want these back?
Sure.
I'm keeping mine.
You want these?
Claire, 14 Watermill Building Supply? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Kristen, what's our drop dead time to be out of here, six, quarter of six?
Six, when ZBA comes in.
We can go beyond five, yeah. Hi.
My clients, Tom Farrell and Tommy Nikkon are in the waiting room, they raised their hand, can we let them in?
Yeah, sure. Kevin, can you let the people in the waiting room in?
So we discussed this at the last meeting, um, your traffic consultant had some questions for them, so they answered. Basically, some of it was dates, and then the traffic turning, is that what you're pressing on now?
Uh, the next one is.
Is this the same?
Uh, yes, oh, I'm sorry, that's just, it's the same.
One is thicker than the other. Why is one thicker than the other?
I know, every time you come to a table, you confuse us with too much paperwork.
Sorry.
Is that a strategic move?
To have them in the size that we can deal with them, thank you.
Right, and all over with.
Send it to the microphone.
So, um, based upon that conversation, um, we said if they got us the information about the traffic, traffic turning lane, um, the updates with the information for the traffic count states, um, we could send it to your consultant, who okayed everything, thought everything looked good, his, his job was done. Um, so I said then we could look at the SECR. This is the actual narrative, do you wanna look at the part two first?
Yeah, and then go to your narrative.
Narrative, sure. So, the impact on land, I've said, and then I've looked up to the narrative. Or you want me to say impact on land, and then we'll go over the wording?
Well, why don't you just say impact on land, and then read your wording?
Read my wording, great. Impact on lands, so the projects for the demolition of buildings and construction of additional twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square foot building, on proposed lot one, in addition to the existing seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-six square foot building, and the construction of a three thousand square foot building on proposed lot two, one hundred five point nine acre piece of property to be subdivided, used as home improvement and rental equipment center. Mitigation includes the construction of drainage, which can accommodate runoff from the project. The impact on land is construction of the building and associated parking. So groundwater is also this, an impact. Project will have innovative alternative systems, which will require review and approval from the health department. Project will be supplied water from the S, Suffolk County Water Authority. Property is located over a sole source to aquifer. Mitigation includes stormwater prevention, pollution prevention plan, to be submitted to town engineer.
Claire, this is only on the new building?
This is on and everything.
So the other, other parcel is well putting in a new system?
Yes.
The, the existing building has a IA already.
You already have that?
Yeah, it was re, it was relocated.
We had to switch it to make room.
Okay. Good, that's good.
Good, so the whole, all buildings will have IA systems, is that right? I'll put that in there. Okay. So the impact on, uh, aesthetics, uh, building, the project will be designed to be in keeping with the design standards of the highway business overlay districts, um, or, sorry, highway business districts, not overlay. Materials are appropriate for the surrounding area, the design of the building are in keeping with the surrounding community characters. I think we looked at the elevations before, if you remember.
Very nice.
Yeah. And then due to routine travel by residents, there might be, must be a retention of the existing berm and landscape, and the supplementation of extensive landscaping and street trees along Montauk Highway. So we'll look at that more with site plan, but you, you wanted the berm to stay.
Oh, yeah, it's iconic.
Plan, there's, um, not only the berm, but in the, see, the southeast corner, there's a whole, um, sort of, uh, rain garden.
Oh, good. That berm is one of the most beautiful.
Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, it just really helps, exactly.
Do we, have these gentlemen identified themselves with a record?
We do. Didn't I take that? We have Steve Marodo. Oh, no, that's Connor. Oh, sorry.
That's all right, Robert Faschetti, uh, for the applicant.
Rick Smotsky.
And you're the applicant, right?
Yeah, we're in a group.
The applicant is on.
They're on the Zoom.
Oh, yes, great. Um, so, uh, his, the impact on historic and archaeological, this is related to the fact it is in the archaeological overlay dis, uh, sensitive area, excuse me. But you determined that, you had no archaeological study at the time of the pre-submission. It's a disturbed property.
Yeah.
So transportation, we kinda went over that, obviously, at the last meeting, and this meeting. References, the, the Ron Hill study, um, and concludes, the, the second one says it's, uh, no significant impact on the traffic generated from the sites. The one thing I wanna discuss is the cross-access. We do have cross-access to the east and west, future cross-accesses. Go ahead.
Sorry, if you remember, um, the, the last time we talked about this during the preliminary stage, we looked at, so there's a retaining wall on the east, uh, property boundary, that, Ricky, have that map?
There was a grade?
That, yeah, it changed the grade, and so then, the only location where it starts to become available is in our sort of secured rear yard, uh, that's gonna be fenced off, and is, would put us in the, the neighbor's, uh, rear yard. So it's all the way back here, all our traffic flow is up here. This is, the retaining wall comes to here, the potential for, uh, an integration with the other lot is way back here. So it doesn't, doesn't seem very practical to, uh, just to be able to then have to weave through there, this is that, um, the business.
You'd also have to hire another person to operate that, uh, 'cause it's secure, people leaving the site, it'll be checked out.
Yeah, so there's.
Of course, you have another employee.
Right, because everyone, um, after they pick up their materials from their rear building, will get checked out, and will leave out, out of the front, if they then turn around and leave this way, then for security and everything, we're gonna have to have a, another gate and everything else in the back there.
It's actually another problem, because the, the access to this site here, the adjacent site, comes out right on top of the intersection of Scuttle Hall Road and Montauk Highway.
Is that the gas, is that the gas station?
No, these are those new buildings in behind.
The new buildings.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
They come out on that western runway.
Prenna, can you, can you help us with?
Trying to catch the locking.
If, if, when there's, there were a traffic circle there, which is.
No, but it's.
Long-term plans, that would, that would be wonderful.
That's Elcano site.
It's very close to that intersection, and when we did our accident study, that intersection has more accidents.
Let's, let's look at it.
The street view, or, what were you talking about?
No, that's fine.
That's it, so there's.
You can blow up the intersection of Scuttle Hall Road.
Oh, but you wouldn't be coming out there.
Yeah, that's where you'd be coming out.
You, you see the flags for those rear lots, it's just right there, yeah.
It's 'cause those are residential properties to the north, so it's.
It's zoned OD, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that we're gonna implement it now, but I think we need to keep it.
The future, so future, we'll keep the future to the west and the east, okay.
All right, keep it on paper, things may change.
General, future cross-access to the east and west, okay.
Has to be worked out, has to be worked out.
I like it. Okay?
Okay.
And then, um, the two access points, I think you said DOT gave you some type of preliminary approval, right?
Yeah, it's, it's approval, it says, send us the bond and the fees.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I see, I see, good. Um, and then, there'll be obviously a reciprocal between yourselves of the cross-access easements, because it works together, the two properties, okay? Um, and then EV charger stations, too, so we can work out the number during the site plan charge, uh, site plan. Uh, so impact on noise, odor, and lights, um.
I like that. If you don't get a, if you can't get a contract by December first, you'll have to reapply for a new one.
Quick, quick, right.
Um.
Where are you, Claire?
Uh, impact on noise, odor, and lights, they don't have a lighting plan yet, 'cause this has been preliminary with the ZBA, preliminary with us, so, um, I'm just saying generally you have to comply with the code and the DUCs, yes.
And poles no higher than ten feet.
I can say that. Um, and then consistency with community plans, obviously, this is a precedence, there are going to be zoning board appeals for the square footage above, they're continuing the square footage on the existing lots, but making the lots smaller. So that is what, where they're going with the zoning board appeals, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, but the new lot, which is thirteen thousand, would be conforming.
Conforming.
Yes. So I just wanted to point that out. And then the, the parking spots, oh, I don't know if they have the right number here with the parking spots, but I'll have to double-check that.
And the building actually, on the.
Thirteen thousand.
On the new lot is gonna be fifteen thousand square feet, or thirteen thousand, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'll just mention that.
Okay.
Just conformity, thirteen thousand square feet, new building. Okay, and then the consistency of the community character, the architecture is completely consistent. So I'm recommending a negative separation.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay. We can take a vote on that. Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Thanks for all the material, so very well-prepared and helpful.
Thanks, Ron.
All right, is there anything that we can take off this agenda that can wait till December eleventh? Seth, Prenna, anybody?
Everything else is pretty much pro forma for this, right? These are quicker ones.
Well, there are three sites disturbances.
But we can do, we can make those quick.
The hotel development, is that? Is that time-sensitive? It is on the ninth?
Yes.
If we, if we have time, both my applicants are here, but again, as time permits.
We can go till a quarter of six, so.
It's four-twenty, so.
Let's keep motion, moving, so, do you wanna do Oceanside, Claire? Okay. Number fifteen, Oceanside.
Sounds like Joe Gazzza.
Yes, that's Joe Gazzza.
So, um, where we're at is the ZBA has an application for access to this old file map, uh, five lots.
They have an application for access over the easement.
Over the easement.
Okay, they're, we'll consider that.
It's an unlisted action.
Right.
As, uh, preliminarily classified by the planning board. Um, they have a licentious lead agency to you, um, and so, um, this would be your purview to, uh, either to look at it for a, uh, secret determination, or, um, if you determine that there may be a significant impact on environment, you could consider making a decision on the old file map itself, which would be a type-two action on your behalf.
So when you say, looking at the old file map, does that mean closing it? Alterating it?
Making a determination whether to open this or not.
To open it.
You could make a determination, if you think the environmental issues on this property, these developments, opening of the old file map is so, rises to the level of a posd act, my recommendation to you would be to issue a denial on the open, opening of the old.
Old file map.
Would this, would this be eligible for a condition, NAGDAC, too?
Yes. It could be.
But then you have to go through SECR, or not? You do.
Yeah, you would.
You would.
You would, and you could, at that ca, in that case, say, I don't think four lot, five lots are appropriate, I think one lot's appropriate, two lots, three lots, or whatever, when you do that. You could do that, it is an unlisted action, so you could do a condition, NAGDAC.
Okay, Joe, you know, we're limited with time here, so.
Obviously. First, I'd like to address Mr. Neely. At our last meeting before the board, Mr. Neely brought up a point, was about the thinking about for the last month. Brought up that I bought the land after the town bought the, uh, the lots on the map. And I was think, thinking about that, and I said, you know, I, I'm experienced, and I do my homework before I buy something, and I, I do the work. And I said, did I really buy landlocked land? And I went through all my files, I've been doing that the last couple days, and I found, I'll pass this to Mr. Neely first. I found that I did some research, and I hired Fidelity Title Company in Riverhead to search whether I had rights to use Cathy's Way. You may remember Cathy's Way is the, the orange road on the map of Oakland Farms, which has been the big issue. And, of course, if I didn't have rights, I bought landlocked land, Mr. Neely would be correct. But the title company certified that I had rights.
Do you wanna copy that? Did you?
I gave that to Mr. Neely. I have extra copies for.
So your title company gave you, said you had rights?
They said that I had rights, uh, to, they said this was a, I'll use their words, like a public road.
That's not the word, the other one.
I have extra copies, I should pass them out.
This is. What title company did you use?
Fidelity. And I have the full report, which I gave to Mr. Neely. And the access was, was very convoluted for this property, okay? And it'll take me a couple minutes to bring you all up to speed on it. When the planning board studied the entire old filed map of Oceanside, you're required, and you did, provide for the entire map, not just that portion of the map that Mr. Tidaldi was developing, which was about forty-five acres, but there was five acres down in the bottom, which he didn't own. But the planning board had the foresight to say, well, we have to provide access to a future development of this five acres, we just can't cut it off the map and forget about it. And you did, and you provided Cathy's Way, because it's shown on the, uh, Fidaldi map. Looking for the Tidaldi filed subdivision map. This is it here. The Tidaldi map was in three sections, but this is the section that's appropriate. And the planning board did provide an access route to get into the yellow portion, which is the Gaza land, okay? But there's a twist, because you provided a little, a hook in here to connect, see that little pink? And that little pink was a part of the Tidaldi map that the planning board was supposed to obtain before the map was approved and finalized, because that was the, the hook to get into the six acres. The planning board did not obtain that. And Jackie Fenlin and I worked for almost two years to get Mr. Hayfully, who was the attorney for Tidaldi, to give that little hook to the town, so that I could connect, and he wouldn't do it. And, uh, we just sort of stopped after a couple years, just he wouldn't do it. So, what I did, I was.
What was his reasoning?
Excuse me?
What was his reasoning?
I spoke to Jackie, he wouldn't talk to me. I, I didn't talk, I don't know if he would or not, but I did not talk to him. But he didn't talk to Jackie back.
And that was when she was in the planning department, just wanna be clear.
Person on this.
Just wanna be clear.
Yeah. So, we, we didn't get the hook. So I said, hmm. I applied to Fidelity Title, I said, you know, what's, what's the status? And they, they dug into this hook, and they said, well, you'll have to get a deed from, uh, the developer to, to make the connection. Or, I could buy this additional parcel, this, this little piece in here, right, which I didn't own at the time, the land that I initially bought was down here, but I went ahead and I bought this extra piece, so that now, I would have direct connection into Cathy's Way. Now, things happened, uh, Jackie Fen, uh, Fenlin and, um, the two attorneys, Lisa Combrick and, um.
Mary Wilson.
Mary Wilson, at Community Preservation, they said, this all came.
I'll put it up there now, can we?
Are you done?
Put it on the chair, maybe, so if you want to use it, so put it on the chair.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've got so many maps here. Jackie Fenlin and, uh, spoke to the, the two ladies at Community Preservation, as I did. And I said, look, I, I have to use Cathy's Way to get to my property. They said, it's not gonna happen. This is Community Preservation, bought it with Community Preservation money, and we're not gonna let you open the road.
What did they buy?
They bought, uh, six, seven lots, they bought these seven lots and Cathy's Way. It's shown in the deed that Mr. Neely has.
The meets and bounds described the roadway, in addition to the lots.
Okay.
So, Community Preservation, the two attorneys took their position, not gonna be able to use our road. So, Mr. Hayfully knocked me out of the ballpark with the first one, Community Preservation knocked me out with the second one, and at that point, I became landlocked, okay? But not, not, not initially, like, I didn't, I, I, I thought I had it, but the title company said I, I had access. But the, the two ladies said, I don't care what the title company says, we're telling you, you're not gonna use our road. That set me back another two years, because to try to get access to my land, I approached all the residents on Peter's land. I think there's five or six of them. I wrote them, I called them, I visited them, I offered them fifty thousand dollars each, if they would sell me a driveway to get to my land.
Well, Joe, can we just skip over to the fact that you did get an easement, okay?
One neighbor said, I'll give you a thirty-foot easement, but I want a lot, Mr. Nukewitz. So Mr. Nukewitz and I made that deal, and then Mr. Nukewitz and I made an application to the planning board. That's the first time we made a, a twenty-six hundred dollar old file map opening application. Before that time, I made applications to the board to abandon the paper streets, which you approved inside my yellow area, to get direction from the board about how to develop this. I made applications with the community, uh, the town conservation, with the wetlands, with all the other agencies. But the first time that it came before the board, with the twenty-six hundred dollar fee for opening an old file map, was when Mr. Nukewitz and I got together and said, we got access now.
What lot did you give him?
Lot number one.
This one.
You gave him that one?
Which sits behind, directly behind his property, right?
Behind his house, that's why he wanted it. Okay? So, the, the deal with Nukewitz was that we were gonna do an application, I was gonna do it, before the planning board, to get four lots for me and one lot for him approved, for building purposes. It didn't work out that way, because Mr. Nukewitz's lot that I gave him was only twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand square feet, you have to have forty thousand square feet, is it CR, R forty, or CR forty?
I think it's CR forty.
CR forty zone, so he didn't get a building lot. You have twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand square feet of land. You have twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand square feet of land. A separate lot, it was a separate lot on the maps, but it wasn't a building lot. But we did the exchange anyway. He said, you know what, it's behind my home. He says, it's a nice piece of wooded land, you cleaned it all up, because the neighbors had dumped all the garbage on all this property. And we made the deal. So here we are, before the board, five years ago, with a five-lot application. Now, unfortunately for Nukewitz, he can't get a building lot, because he doesn't have forty thousand square feet, and he doesn't have development rights.
Correct.
And, of course, the board will only hear an applicant for a building lot if he produces evidence that he has the development rights. So I'm left by myself now for a four-lot division of my five-and-a-half acres. And I have already been through a number of town departments, and these being the four lots, I gave up this portion, the rear portion of the property, with a conservation easement, because this is where the Aspen Duck Creek winds through.
You didn't give it up, you...
I preserved it in exchange for development rights.
Yeah.
So this is technically out of the equation. And what I have left is four forty-thousand-square-foot lots. And after review by all the agencies, and everybody had to put their two cents into this, the health department was a nightmare, but we've allocated area on each of the lots for a building envelope that's in complete compliance with all the town codes. It has the hundred-foot set, the hundred-and-twenty-five, the hundred-and-fifty, has the AI systems with proper setbacks, so that there's no sanitary discharge that's going adversely affect the wetlands, which are way down over here. I have letters from the water authority, because there's public water on Peter's Lane, to serve each of the lots. I have fire district approved, West Hampton Beach, because there's a fire hydrant, and the distance they can make it with a hose to every house. So I'm at the point where I was hoping to get the four lots approved. And that brings us up to about six or eight months ago, before your board. And it came to light that, under the code of the town, that a lot has to have forty-feet frontage on a road to be approved. There's a lot, am I correct with that?
Mm-hmm, or a twenty-foot flag lot.
Right, yeah. So I don't have flag lots, and I don't have forty-feet frontage for each of the lots. So I made application to the zoning board of appeals. I started last December for a reduction to zero. They called it a zero front yard. The zoning board heard my case, but five days before the hearing, they received the memo from your board that the type-two action that you had originally designated for this property may have changed to an unlisted.
Yes.
Okay? And the zoning board put the brakes on, and they said, we can't make a decision until the SECA is resolved. Which brings me, before you today, on the SECA issue. I wanted to get back to zoning board to see what they have to say. And depending upon what they approve would influence what you can approve, if anything. And I'd like to get there, but they won't hear it without something under the SECA.
Claire, if we designated it as something, does it go back then to the zoning board of appeals, and then he comes back here after that?
It's been designated as unlisted action.
We did that already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Zoning board of appeals said it was unlisted, relinquished lead agency to the planning board.
So where's the access to this parcel?
Over thirty-foot easements over Nukewitz's property.
This is the Nukewitz, he owns a home, and he has apartments in here, actually. And he's granted a thirty-foot all-purpose easement to get to my land.
Your map shows five lots, because you, at the time, you considered that lot behind him as a lot. You're saying that it's no longer...
No, it's undersized.
I understand, but you're saying now...
It's not part of his...
Your plan will be four lots, not five.
Four lots. This would be designated as a transfer of development rights parcel, which is what you do when a lot...
You open a map.
When you open a map.
And that would be to you or to him?
Him, he owns it.
He owns it, okay.
So what about this road frontage? There's no road, right?
There's only an easement.
And the variance is to accept the thirty-foot instead of the forty-feet.
Oh, but each lot has to have forty. So it would have to have, if it was four lots, it would have to have eighty feet.
Each would...
Each, that would be correct. And, of course, we've seen these before, right? People split it, go to the zoning board of appeals, for ten feet each, they share a common driveway. That's been done. The issue is the amount of frontage, the variance. And then also, before, discussed at, like, the February eighth, your meeting as a work session, concerns about the flooding on the property.
Flood zones, yeah.
So those were the two environmental issues that I gleaned out of that meeting. I have to refresh myself and look at the meeting again. But those were the two environmental issues, the access and...
So did we get an interpretation about the access here? It was our understanding that you couldn't have access to old-file maps over an easement, but that's not so.
She's saying, yes, you could do this, but zoning-wise, it would not be in compliance. He would need zoning of appeals.
Yeah, he needs a zoning, which he is before right now.
So he needs a ZB approval.
Yes.
For a thirty-foot strip for four lots.
For four lots.
As opposed to four forty-foot strips.
Or some other, if you guys decide that, a conditioned negdeck or some other, like, maybe you could serve two or three lots, like, that's up to you guys.
Yes.
Have you considered that?
If I could just mention first that I did provide at one of our prior meetings four maps that the planning board has approved on less than fifty-feet frontage. On Gray Hill Road, for example, or Castle Hill Court.
Even if they accepted, that the frontage is okay via the access. It still comes down to the number of lots that they're not comfortable with.
All right, so have you considered reducing the number of lots to half of that?
Madam Chairman, I am putty in your hands. This has been over ten years for me. It's been five years before the board. I've been through access issues like I've never experienced before. With every...
Well, it's an unusual situation here.
It is, it's five years.
May I ask a question? When you look at the original old-file map that was meant to be opened, you actually show four lots in that area, one of which now still exists, but you can't be developed, right?
Yeah, the one above it.
The one above it, next to Kathy Way, cannot be developed, because...
So, one, two, three, four, correct.
So if you take away that one lot that sits behind Mr. Nukewitz's house, that is now going to be a separate thing, so leaves you with three lots that you can develop.
Well, this is actually one, it's four pieces, there's another little piece in here.
Yeah, but that's not a, that's not a building lot.
Not a building lot, no.
I'm talking about building, what building lots that was approved when the map was open.
And could we agree at three lots? And let me proceed.
I think we have to go through SECA to determine the appropriate. No, but the access was the critical issue that we've been, like, chewing on forever. And so if we're receiving a determination based on research from council that there is access, and then we can let him go to the ZBA...
He's already there, that's what I'm, I'm cleared up, because he's asked the ZBA.
They can make the decision, and he can come back, so we can really look at it.
They threw it back to us for...
Environmental purposes.
So, okay, so we declared it already unlisted, and what's our next step? That's what I was trying to get to.
You're going to consider SECA.
Determination, yeah.
Do you think now that is a SECA, go through the eighteen standards?
Are we doing SECA based on that, or are we just doing SECA based on...
We're going to do it based on what he's showing us, but...
When you know about that, it's your issue and the access.
Our medication could say two lots.
So if we were going to, I'm just sorry, I'm trying to understand. So if we were going to consider doing SECA, we would, on December ninth, arguably, or whatever date, we would go through those, and then we would come to a determination. And, but in the interim, the ZBA, it would be held in abeyance until we have finished what we are doing and going back. Okay.
So ZBA cannot consider it till we finish the SECA.
Correct.
Do they relinquish lead agency to you?
But that makes sense.
You understand the environmental issues.
Yeah, no, that's for again.
They generally do SECA.
Even if they were to grant the relief, they would be bound by, arguably, what we're saying it could, would be appropriate.
Okay.
So let's do SECA.
We go through SECA.
Let's do SECA.
Let's do it.
So...
You don't want to call it type-two, right? Because it was, it was type-two.
It's already specified.
ZBA actually said it was unlisted, so done.
It's unlisted.
Two or three?
Well, don't we have, don't they have to consider what's there, or to go through the SECA? Doesn't that happen at the end?
Yeah, but I'm thinking, like, you might do a condition negdeck, and it might come up with a number.
But I think we do that after we go through the issues that we have.
Yeah, because the environmental impact here is for real.
Do you want me to take a stab at the, just like I did today with the water mill?
Yes.
Take a stab at it, come up with it, we'll go over it.
Yep.
And then we can see if this is a Pasek negdeck or a condition negdeck.
Yeah. I know, but just let me, I'd like to put this, say this as well. I notice concerns about wetlands and the creek. This is, this subdivision, even as proposed, there is, it meets every setback. Conservation easement of the wetlands, uphill here that is completely out of the flood zone, and let us keep that in mind, which is no different from many other subdivisions we've approved in the past, where there are wetlands that have been isolated, very much similar to this. So we, you know, we should just keep that in mind, that we don't try to, we recognize that...
It's part of a buffer, too, I think, on the back of those lots.
Do we, I just want to point out that I think the flood zone maps are changing.
They're changing, but we make rulings on what we have right now. We don't know what it's going to be.
We have a lot of lakes and ponds that are remediating.
No, I mean, they're changing it.
If I'm mistaken, I thought it was in January.
January, and this is flood zone area. Look, you've maxed out your development, that's an issue, you know, four lots, so...
I'm deserving over seventy percent of the land.
We have direction, the board gave direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so...
I'm going to take a stab at it.
Thank you.
For, are you okay with the eleven?
Claire, that's a big, that's a big agenda on the eleven.
It's up to you.
I mean, maybe give us a chance, Joe, are you okay with us pushing this to the first meeting in January, so allow Claire to do...
It's been five years.
So you'll take another month.
I know, but you know what's going to happen.
January eighth.
So to January?
No, just for consideration.
I got a, that I can't commit to.
To January eighth.
We'll get a chance to review Claire's recommendation.
You might be in Florida? Are you saying you won't be here?
No, I might be in Australia.
But what date, do you want the next?
I don't know.
Look in your, look in your book.
I can't talk to my wife.
January twenty-second is the other one.
I'm like, I'm not going to be here, so this is great.
But I'm saving this.
December twenty-sixth, the January something.
January twenty-second?
That wouldn't be that long.
The new January twenty-second?
Oh, twenty, January, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so to January twenty-seventh.
This is important, you really should consider, you know, canceling your trip to Australia.
Well, the fifty is ready, I don't care.
I was thinking we could go with them.
So...
So extension until January twenty-second, can you just...
Motion to the extension by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor, to January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
To look at SECA. Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll get it finished.
We're making progress, thank you.
Thank you, another box.
Get off here.
Yes.
You guys.
Oh, boy, you've got an hour.
You got this.
What can we do quickly? Teresa?
I could paper my office with all of the...
I'm sorry, thank you.
Hanger Charlie?
Yes, so we have received the application for Hanger Charlie, which is the Commercial Car Club, and the preliminary subdivision application for the ten residential lots, inclusive of the three open space parcels, one of which would be Dog Park, if accepted by the town board. Wayne and I had discussed it. There is some items that need to be resolved before we can commence SECA on the application. They were outlined in a checklist, which was sent to you and to the applicant. We made some minor revisions to the checklist. So the applications are being recommended for being deemed incomplete. So the first one is for the preliminary, to deem that incomplete. And then the second one is for the site plan.
Hanger Charlie preliminary, a motion to deem it incomplete by Kate, second by Gloria. All in favor? Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. And then the site plan, Teresa?
Also the same.
Also incomplete.
Yep.
The Hanger Charlie site plan incomplete, motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Wayne.
Do we have Burnett Family Trust to reschedule the public hearing?
That's to reschedule a hearing, it was on...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, hold on. We have sixteen and eighteen here.
But seventeen is...
Seventeen is...
Burnett Family Trust.
We need a new hearing date.
New hearing date.
Yeah, the new hearing date, no, December eleventh. The board sort of rescheduled it at the hearing day, but you didn't vote on it, so we just need a formal vote.
Are you going to, wait, before we do that, though, are they going to be able to make with the holiday schedule for the publications?
Yeah, it's already been, it's already been done, yeah.
December eleventh, okay, so motion to, for December eleventh hearing by Gloria, and second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
I could have sworn we voted on that, because we talked about it.
Christine even confirmed at the end of the meeting, but then we re-watched it, and there was no vote.
Okay, so now you've got December eleventh, okay? Teresa?
Yes, so this is an application for preliminary conference. This is the old rapid recovery parcel in Hampton Bays, right near the radiology office that we just, the old diner. We are setting the pre-submission conference for the first meeting in January. Also, the applicant has submitted a request for interior renovations of the existing office only, including replacing a boiler, removing interior chimneys, and putting in some knee walls. So the resolution also does permit for those interior renovations with the understanding that the applicant has no vested rights to the use until we've gone through the site plan process. So there's two resolves there.
Did you say a chimney?
Interior chimney, for like a fireplace.
An underground gallon liquid protein demolishing of an existing detached garage?
Yes, there's currently...
Construction of a new nine-hundred square, all of that he wants?
No, no, that's not, no, no.
Sure, if you want to.
That is the pre-submission conference.
Just the last resolve.
That's the site plan documents. There is currently a building permit application just solely for interior renovations of the existing office, which is at the front of the building, which are minor, it includes removing and replacing a boiler, removing an interior chimney, and constructing some new walls inside. No changes in parking.
You'll track it?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion, did you make a motion?
Yes.
George, second by Tom, all in favor? Opposed, extensions, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Prenna, you want to do North Edge Stables?
Yes, thank you.
I don't know how we're going to get through this.
We'll get it, I think there's some of them, I think they're going to go quickly.
Okay, all right. Yes, Wayne Bruin, welcome.
This is the horse farm.
Yes.
This was last on the agenda for completeness, on September eleventh. The board deemed it incomplete due to submission requirements mostly to do with the plants. Since then, we've considered the application further, reviewed the SECA regulations, consultation with the town attorney's office, and staff believes this falls under a type-one action pursuant to SECA and given the level of disturbance of the land, since it's greater than ten acres. Prior to that and during the submission, it was discussed as type-two, but with this information, and the information reviewed by staff, we're calling it a type-one, which would require a full EAF Part One coordination with any involved agencies, and then it will still remain incomplete.
So it remains incomplete, because this is to consider completeness, okay?
Yeah, well, this, it's already been deemed incomplete, so it would remain incomplete.
It remain incomplete. It remain incomplete.
The new item here is the designation.
Designation. Okay, well, I understand that. Wayne, did you need to say anything?
Absolutely. Obviously, I'm shocked that this is coming up at this point. This wasn't identified in September, wasn't identified in your pre-app. In fact, it's totally inconsistent as a matter of law and also a matter of practice. Number one, as you have done on every horse farm that has ever been reviewed and approved, you've considered and deemed a horse farm a type two action under the regulations, which basically indicate that agricultural farm management practices, including construction, maintenance and repair of farm buildings and structures, and the land use changes consistent with generally accepted principles of farming, is a type two action. I say it's contrary to law because the Supreme Court of State of New York has addressed this very issue with respect to the state regulations. And I'll just read one sentence out of their decision. This court holds that the construction of a barn, including a riding stable therein, falls well within the scope of farm buildings and structures, consistent with the generally accepted principles of farming. And accordingly, the planning board in that case, classification of a type two action under SECR is not arbitrary and capricious and is supported by substantial evidence. Furthermore, as I indicated, we look specifically at, and at all, because it was identified by staff at the pre-app. Every horse farm this board has approved, in fact, a couple that, like last week, scheduled a public hearing on type two actions. Went back and looked at all of those, all type two actions. One in particular, Edgewood Farms, Lauer property. One of, number one, town development rights easement, just like this, same exact language. Type two action. And the staff is now raising so-called levels of what the code says, physical alteration.
So on disturbance.
That particular application, if you recall, had a manmade pond, all sorts of things, well over ten acres. The Campbell Farm, similar. All these issues, all over that. But here's the other kicker on this. We asked the Rayner Group to look at our plan, and they put together a map, which I'll hand you for the record. But the area, the physical alteration of this property is less than ten acres. So I don't know what the staff is relying on, but the physical alteration, and you can see the outline of what we included, and I told them to be very liberal, the grass areas in between buildings and so on, that really are not being altered. We counted. The paddocks outside, which is, if you know, this property is currently a paddock with a fence around it and is being used by horses. The areas outside, there's not going to be any physical alteration other than a paddock fence being placed on the property. So that, we don't believe is considered physical alteration of the property. So not only as a matter of law is the staff suggesting this board take an action that's contrary to law, but it's also contrary to your past practice. And it's incorrect, as a matter of fact, because it does not involve more than ten acres of alteration, physical alteration of the property. So I would suggest that we go back, this application, you have full jurisdiction under your review powers. The issue here is, it's a type two action under SECR. We are consulting the state ag and markets as to if this planning board is to take a different position and whether or not that's contrary to your authority. And our client is, is getting very upset and is considering litigation counsel as well. So I'm not trying to threaten you, but this is where it's going. We, we could have argued that it was complete back in September. Nonetheless, we went and got the little items that needed to be completed, we submitted them. It's been sitting here on your desk since October twentieth.
And it's November twentieth. So that's how we review applications.
Information of staff. If you want to question, you can have discussion with staff.
Rayner, part of Rayner's plans does show this erosion and sediment control plan of a, of a limit of disturbance as twenty-three point nine acres of the twenty-nine point nine acre lot. So it's approximately eighty percent of the lot. So I think that's where a lot, where a lot is coming from.
They're doing that for the drainage purposes. What is the area that they have to deal with drainage? But that's not, you see what is shown on his plan? That's the physical alteration, essentially everything inside of where these buildings and this circular drive is, is what's being altered.
But, but there's alteration of drainage. We went through this with two trees.
There's no drainage.
We went through this with two trees, all the drainage easements, all the drainage easements were disturbance of the soils, and that had to be corrected. So that was.
The plan you just submitted to us, have we, do we have that plan?
A plan?
Yes.
The plan that you just passed out. Has that been submitted to?
That's the same plan. All he did was draw a red line around the area of physical alteration.
So you're going to submit for the record a plan? That's not a plan. That is not to scale, we cannot read that, it's eight and a half by eleven. Can you give us a plan that actually shows the limit of disturbance?
Absolutely.
Great. So then we can reconsider the SECR classification at that time.
But we do have to consider.
So this, but at a size you can read it.
Yes. And time for the, the staff to look at it.
I would just suggest that this is something, if you thought you were doing this correctly, this should have been done in September. And, you know, further delay, our, our position is the application's complete, you have to schedule a public hearing on this, so.
Well, you just said that we don't have the information that clearly.
You do have the information.
Clearly reflects the disturbance of the property. We have one plan that shows twenty-three acres being disturbed.
And you're misinterpreting it.
Well.
We did this to clarify how it should be viewed. And, and clear fact is, we're not physically altering more than, but nonetheless, regardless, as a matter of law, this is a type two action.
Why, because you're following?
It's a farm, it's construction of farm.
So you're looking at eggs and markets, right? Is that what you're relying on, eggs and markets interpretation?
No, I just told you, if you want the citation of the case, as well as statute.
Can, can we just quote SECR? If there's more than, I mean, this is eighty percent of the site that's disturbed.
That's the information we have.
Two dates. But you're giving us different, you're going to give us a different map.
I'm not giving you a different map. The map is there, will show, but this is just clarifying for you what is the physical alteration of the property.
We want to make sure that, that, that's between you saying less than ten acres and that saying twenty-three, we want to make sure that preserving the valuable farmland on this property.
I mean, the ag advisory committee.
Have that information.
It talks about excessive amount of land being disturbed here. So, and we've got drainage issues that disturbs, what did, what did you read, the twenty-three percent?
The twenty-three point nine acre, they have it as a limit of a disturbance and they're showing areas where they're compiling soil. But yeah, it's on, and it does include the eleven paddocks at the, at the east side of the property.
Right, because there is.
The paddocks are being altered.
Like, I'm just saying it envelops all of that.
None of that land is being touched.
This is showing the reduction of that.
But, but the outdoor paddocks are adjusted.
And that's what we're going to talk to ag and markets to see if, if putting a fence up for keeping the horses.
No, 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 I'm talking that surface.
They're not changing the surface.
The surface.
The only one is they're doing is the sand ring here. These are all grass, pasture.
For safeties of the horses, I mean, they will often put in the new materials. I mean, we went through this with two trees recently.
Not in these paddocks, not in all these paddocks. They're all remaining the existing grass that's there. The sand ring is when you put in the surface to protect the horses when they're jumping. This is pasture, these paddocks are all for pasture, they stay the same. Nothing's happening, no grading or anything happens in those areas.
All right, so what we want here is a recalculation, is that what we're looking at? Yeah?
I think Washington's looking for you to give a full-scale copy of this plan, which you're seeing for the first time.
Calculations that.
Sorry, I couldn't print it in a larger size.
No, no, that's okay, but you can get it from.
But that's why it was emailed to me just before this meeting, because I had, you know, Claire gave me a ball.
Called you yesterday, yes.
And, and gave me an idea that you were going to totally do something different than you've been doing on this application, as well as every other application. So, you know, didn't give us a lot of time to prepare.
We came upon this issue with Pasanelli. That is a farm, if I cleared nine point six acres. We determined it to be an unlisted action at that time. Above that, ten acres would have caused type one.
Right.
And so we are consistent going forward to that application. Prior to, there may be some discrepancies on that.
That's town code? I'm sorry, on the ten acres?
That is state.
State.
State code, SECR relations.
Okay.
The state code just bumps you to type one if there's physical alteration of ten acres or more.
Correct.
That's why.
Otherwise, and, and there's an argument regardless, that if you're on the type two list, you're a type two action.
Correct.
So.
It's the physical alteration.
The physical alteration of the soils.
I don't know what you did on the other one, but it sounds like it didn't exceed ten acres. So it's farm practice, so you're, should have been a type two.
Okay.
And I can't speak to that.
Right. So can you get the full-size copy to that, this new approval?
Absolutely.
And it sounds as though to sweep through it is something different in terms of the area of the stubs. Probably where the plan to put the hay bales was just outside of here. But at least this will get the planning board an actual limit of.
The mayor's due to make sure exactly that's what Mr. Mutu's indicating is, is where you have to put hay bales and all those other.
So it's the information right now, and this will.
The actual physical alteration is.
And this will actually provide the planning board and, and town planners, this is the area that you plan to disturb. So during construction, it will be on a record, this is the area to be disturbed, but nothing outside of it.
Correct.
And we'd look at this in two weeks, is that what we're talking about?
Well.
We'll get you that information. And would there be any, or whatever.
Screaming.
Oh, right, 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 right. And would there be any value in having somebody from Rayner here to explain this? Absolutely, they'll be here.
All right, I'm just, from an agenda standpoint, what is going on December eleventh? Does anybody have a running calculation?
I have two incomplete applications, and then one of them is.
It's not going to be that bad. It won't be as bad as this.
And this will just be for completeness, if, if in fact you guys agree to this is, is not a type one, right?
Well, there has been a determination, so.
It's not a type one anymore if, if it's under the ten acres.
In which case it will be just for completeness, which should be something for a little bit simple.
But it's important with the drainage here, having just gone through that.
The drainage is all within that nine acres. It's not outside of that. So the plan here, there needs to be, obviously, I'll, I'll have Rayner explain what that means, but I believe it's for purposes of calculating what drainage is necessary, because the whole property slopes in one direction and runoff is contributing, whether it's paddock or grass or otherwise. So they have to take that into account.
So we have no action on this today?
Right.
Okay.
So no action today.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Oh, okay. Gloria.
Prenna?
I'm still here.
Okay.
Twenty-one.
What, are we?
Twenty-one R E W P Corp?
Yeah, I was just, I'm sorry, I was looking at the time.
We don't have to make any motion or anything about.
No, okay.
This is a, a road abandonment request. It's a single family residence, seventy Montauk Highway in West Hampton. It's part of an old file map. There is a, like a paper right of way, or I don't know if I would call it, it's an unnamed road. And they're looking to abandon it. It's sixteen and a half feet wide, so they're looking to abandon their half and eight, eight and a quarter foot wide portion, so it's not.
Where is it?
It's kind of hard to see, but see the, the faint white line behind that? So their half.
Their portion, yeah.
Yeah, their half would be about six hundred and eighteen square feet. It's eight and a quarter feet deep, and then the width of the lot.
So you have the exact.
Yeah, it equals six hundred and eighteen square feet, six hundred and eighteen point four eight. A portion, so it extends from, this fronts Montauk Highway and it extends from the road that's to the west. I think that's perceived.
This is the, this is the motel here.
The motel across the street.
And then over here is.
Oh, okay, that's.
The restaurant, which I don't know what's, what's called, was Buoy, Buoy One, right?
Yeah, it's called Petch.
So is it just the strip behind that parcel?
Just that. The east end portion has already been abandoned, so the, there's a strip that goes behind those three lots that's left over.
Why, why do they want to do this?
Why do they want to do it?
Just to take it part of their.
They want to maintain it, they want to take it and absorb it, and they want to, their letter stated that they want to maintain it because it's, it's not maintained.
But they want to abandon it, you said.
Well, there's a road and then.
And the road is part of the lot. Your lot will be six thousand.
So it's not blocking access or?
No, these all have frontage on a town road.
And it's total sixteen feet right away?
Sixteen feet wide, but they're taking, they're going to take half.
They're taking eight and a half.
The town will never be interested in doing anything with it.
It's now, I mean, they would have to go before them as part of the process to just double check it, but I can't imagine.
It's internal, it's very internal, yeah.
It is, yeah.
All right, so motion? Motion by Gloria and second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Seth, you have three.
Oh, no, that was taken off, I'm sorry.
Which is taken off?
One forty-nine Jack Path.
It was taken off.
It was taken off, it's just a new one that came in.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm using the old one.
Colwell Homes?
Yes, thirty-four Virchwood Lane.
Yes.
This is a fairly straightforward revegetation.
In Bridgehampton.
It's a fifteen thousand square foot property with allowed sixty percent under APOD. They're currently cleared seventeen thousand two hundred and sixty-five. The applicant, I should say, the landscape designer was here for two hours or so, but she bailed, Jessica Edge. She and I have been working together on this plan. As you can see, there is quite a bit of natural forest there on, up on this side. And she's going to extend it out around the street.
Turn around to this way.
So we have twenty-nine hydrangeas, twenty-four pepperbush and a lot of bayberries. And then she has undertaken to put in some wildflowers as well.
Nice, they're all native.
Hydrangeas are not native.
There is one, the Carrie Flores, this one, that one right there.
Yeah, that is native, yeah.
The Carrie Flores.
I learned something new, thank you.
Is that native to?
That's a native.
Really, I love those plants.
Hydrangea, yes.
They're still blooming.
Yeah.
They're still blooming.
So I would, I've written up a resolution saying that you have reviewed this revegetation plan and would accept it to put it in compliance.
Good.
Thank you.
Motion? Motion by Gloria and second by George, all in favor. Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
Even though they're native.
Twenty-three Leo Borcoski, forty-five New York Path.
This one I'll pass out as it involves Brian and a TDR. This is very similar to what we looked at last week at seven eighty-eight.
Brian, look at this, with the Adam Miller Group, attorney for the applicant. This board actually adopted a resolution for this very request back in twenty fifteen. Those conditions were development of an equivalent TDR allowing for the ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-six square feet of clearing. Verification by the planning department that the credits are gained east of the canal and filing of a standard covenant. Uh, we obtained credits that are within the same groundwater management approximately two miles from the property. Uh, we've submitted a revised re-vedge plan just because we didn't have access to the prior one. I have copies if you wish to see it. It's, um, rather a regular shaped lot that abuts a large tract of farmland. So while we agree and acknowledge it is subject to clearing limits and needs to be revegetated, it's, um, it's not like it's attached to a large tract of vegetative land. And in any event, we are revegetating and we're looking to, um, just basically instate the twenty fifteen resolution that you all adopted and.
So I have verified that the T D R still exists. Uh, they're in North Sea. It's about two miles to the west. Uh, they're vacant land. Uh, they were signed by the town supervisor in twenty-three and then twenty-four, again, adopted by this planning board in twenty fifteen.
Do we have any exact detail and description of that parcel?
I do. Uh, certainly, yeah, they're North Sea vacant, uh, and they're.
They have the meets and bounds and everything in it?
Uh, it's one of the Gaza Old Files.
I was just gonna say it's probably up.
It is.
Near the dump.
Yeah. So it had met your standards before in twenty fifteen and were considered, they were just never redeemed at that point. So at this point, he's ready to use the, redeem these credits and do a revegetation for sixty-seven hundred square feet. I've visited the site. I've made sure every, all the main managed structures are out of the revegetation area and that the plantings are up to our standards.
Yeah, we did the best to plan to what, to add to the existing vegetation just to create the largest possible, you know, cluster of native vegetation.
Looks like a slice of pizza.
Yes.
It is.
So.
So it's a long-winded resolution, but it would adopt the, uh, this, it recognizes submission of these and asks for them to be redeemed and, and the revegetation plan to be put in place in order to put this property into compliance.
With the same or one year with the six month?
And you've specified the, all the numbers on the T D R?
The T D R.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, motion? By Gloria and second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Close of extension, six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you.
Telegraph Hills, Lot Ten, Thirty-Nine Wireless Way.
Okay. So this is, uh, yeah, Thirty-Nine Wireless Way, C R two hundred and the APOD. Uh, this lot is eighty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-four square feet. Uh, when they created this subdivision, they put in scenic and slope easements. Uh, if we could pull up the easements, it's the, the issue that came to light was the driveway violates the, the easement that you'll see here in a moment on the western side. That has been like that since the inception of this subdivision. It was built that way.
I think it is C O.
And it's been like this for years. So of course now it's come to light for the current homeowner. Uh, I had discussed this with the chief building inspector and the town planning and development administrator. Uh, they, if, if, if you look into the past, it was once a pathway. At any rate, it's kind of pre-existing. They, they found it to be pre-existing. How, and they thought it best, and they were, uh, proposed to you. We have taken the one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven feet of driveway that's in that easement and told the applicant, find another spot on the property to re-vedge. So we are, I'm, in, in essence, reducing the amount of clearing that is allowed under that, uh, Telegraph Hill subdivision as it's prescribed at forty-three thousand one hundred and forty-five for Lot Ten. This particular subdivision just prescribes it for each lot.
It's not Sagaponic.
I was just gonna say, that's not.
Uh, move that revegetation elsewhere. By doing so, they are now not compliant with, uh, how much clearing they would be allowed. So it's, it's a minuscule amount, but it's one thousand one hundred and eighty-three square feet would need to be revegetated by taking that driveway and moves, moving it elsewhere.
Yeah.
So.
Well, don't they have to clear for another driveway?
No, no, the driveway, we are allowing the driveway to stay as it is pre-existing. We're just gonna revegetate elsewhere.
Okay, somewhere else.
Permanent space.
Yeah, okay.
So I have a revegetation for one thousand one hundred and eighty-three square, uh, square feet, fairly simple. And I would propose we accept that and move on.
I'd just like to make a little note that this is not in Sagaponic, I don't think.
No, it's in, uh.
No, it's, it's in.
When did I write that?
Yeah, watermelon at the bottom.
It's been acting up.
There we go.
It's actually been known to make that.
Watermelon. Okay, motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Close of extension, six in favor, one absent.
Woods Road.
So Theresa, you have the two referrals?
Yes, I, uh.
I've hiked in that area a lot.
I'll help with the first one. I'm the first one.
You're the first one? Thank you, sir.
Uh, so the town board is considering legislation to repeal the existing affordable housing overlay district and replace it with a community housing overlay district. In essence, it would be essentially a, similar to a zone change or a, you know, a floating zone where you land it like MF forty-four. But it would be in accordance or in coordination with, uh, obtaining and receiving approval from the town board through the community housing fund money. Um, so I had passed that out at the last meeting for you to review and, uh, consider, um, before you as a resolution, um, recommend.
Before you go on, sorry to interrupt, but they made some changes to it today.
Yes, but I can explain this.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's changes to what you're looking at, just so the board knows.
So, um, yep, I was at the, the work session. If you wanna take a peek at the work session today, um, it was very helpful. Um, so what they were is, do you have the documents from the last meeting? I have, I have copies. Do you have it?
I have it.
Okay.
Oh, God, I'm good.
You good?
Thank you.
So basically, the changes were mostly clarification. The most significant part, though, was, um, do you have it? I don't know if we have the same pages, though.
You have the section, section number.
Yeah, so section three thirty dash twenty-nine dash point two A three. Yeah, so this is one we spoke up, um, page three, yes, um.
Preliminary review for consideration of projects, three thirty, twenty-nine point two.
The one that changes zoning.
Three, that is, it's talked about, um, the level that you should give the C A C in terms of the initial process. Um, the board members felt like we should include the C A C at the work session process. But the, whether you'd have them speak at the meeting or not, which is the last part of that sentence. Um, and then it's, it said, representatives shall have an opportunity to comment on the application, whether you invite them, you can, if they're there, you can invite them to speak. But it doesn't have to.
But make, make it mandatory so that they're.
Yes.
They have, they have to, they have to provide their two cents.
Yeah, exactly. Not the mandatory part, exactly.
And that's.
But they have the opportunity to comment ahead of time and they will be given notice.
Gloria, what are you saying? You're saying make it mandatory or not make it mandatory?
I, I think make it mandatory, that they have to review it.
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
No?
You can't. But you can give them notice that there's gonna be a work session and they have the opportunity to make a comment. Instead of, they shall be given an opportunity to speak at the board meeting, they shall be, have an opportunity to make a comment on the application at that point.
Okay.
Whether written or, or they can come and speak or.
So shame on them if they don't show up.
Yeah.
They're giving notice.
It's a mission.
There was another case, though, that was.
Yep, I had all the changes. I have, I have them all. I will have to write them. So the next one is, um, right, so. I think she has one written here.
I think the first hearing.
Yes, so on page, I think page five, but it's three thirty, twenty-nine point five A.
Thirty.
Bottom of page five.
Yes, it says a public hearing before the board shall comply, uh, with the same notice and prescribed by law for zoning amendments. This is small. Instead of for zoning amendments, we're gonna put the section of the code, just specified. So that's just a, a, you know, to clarify. What we're also gonna, the next page, this is, this is important. Three thirty dash twenty-nine point six, town board action, A two. We're gonna say proposals that are hundred percent senior housing and/or hundred percent disabled housing. She'll have the option to go below the sixty percent AMI.
So proposal, so two, proposals that are hundred percent senior housing developments or?
And/or.
And/or, yeah, correct.
And/or.
Disabled.
Yeah. Okay, so the next change would be, um, on the next page, which is, uh, three thirty, twenty-nine point eight. Be the location, um, this is where we're, we're saying that the traffic issues along County Road thirty-nine to propose some design or project like this would be not in keeping. So anything that has frontage on County Road thirty-nine would not be eligible for this landing of the zone.
Which number is that, Claire?
Be.
On the top of.
Page seven.
Yeah.
Shall be restricted to?
So where it says, uh, restricted to, and, oh, we're also gonna change this to R twenty, R forty.
As well as sixty, eighty, one twenty.
And that, this is a more substantial, of all these things, so everything else is like little words, but this is R twenty, R forty. And the reason is that Janice, when she wrote this incorrectly thought, okay, lots that are more than half acres, they're the, they're the only ones that can be considered for this lo-, zone, but obviously those lots could be in R twenty or R forty. So we wanna include all the residential zones, and it also goes out to include the business districts. And that's where it says outside of the County Road thirty-nine corridor, um.
So you can't consider if it's along the County Road thirty-nine between the college.
If it has frontage.
If it has frontage.
Between the college, so the stretch from the college back to Sunrise theoretically could still be.
Yes.
Did they do like a G I S thing to see where parcels, a certain size in those zones might be located?
I think initially there was an exercise like that. They have not. And if that's a comment you'd wanna make to the bo-, to the board, I think it's, I think it's a good comments.
Again, you get back to this thing of, you know, trying, you, you might find the other parcel that meets those requirements, but it's not really appropriate. You know, it should just have a, do an analysis.
I think we've, that sort of been a comment we've made as a board for any of these zoning changes, that you should have done a G I S upfront to get a sense.
Right, so you can see like what lights turn on when you put the wires together.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I think we've been consistent with that.
Really important. You have then. So I took your wording from the last comment, from, of a specific project, with the same thing, which you recommend a comprehensive study be undertaken to the remaining lands available and the locations that would be.
I didn't just reinvent the wheel.
Where is that, Claire?
Right, so you can see it.
That's our notes to the town board.
This is my preliminary, and this is, this is actually item number three of that.
Can I go back to one item which I may have missed?
Okay.
But three thirty dash twenty-nine point two.
Yep.
Uh, I guess it's four, number four.
Mm-hmm.
After the work session, yada, yada. The town board may elect by resolution, so that's their option, whether they have a public hearing or not.
Oh, no, they have to have a public hearing, but they may elect. Any zone change is a may elect vote.
It's a discretionary action, right? So the board may say, I, we hate this project, go away. And we never wanna see you again on this particular property for this particular action. Um, so they don't.
They don't have to.
If it's a may, then.
So out of the blue.
They don't have to go to a public hearing.
They do not have to consider.
The application.
They're electing to consider the application. Once they do that, if they elect to consider, it does go to a public hearing.
Because that's not. Dismiss it out of hand.
That's what I think.
Misreading four.
Mm-hmm.
After the work session, maybe pursuant, maybe I'm missing something here.
The may elect is to advance the project.
Advance the project to a public hearing.
Yes.
Sounds like they have the option.
Some review under SECR and everything like that.
Not the, public hearing is not optional. The, the, the focus of that sentence is the advancement of the project.
May elect to.
Which paragraph are you? I'm lost.
Uh, page three.
Number four.
Under A.
Three thirty dash twenty-nine point two, number four.
Right.
The way I'm reading it, after the work session, blah, blah, the town board may elect, it sounds to me like they have the option to not have a public hearing, but.
It's the word man.
You guys are saying I'm misreading that.
It's saying, basically, they have a work session, and the board loves the project and say, submit the formal zone change request.
So maybe, maybe clarified by saying may continue, may elect to consider by continuing to a public hearing.
For a formal zone change request.
That's, that's language that's in every zone change.
Really?
Yeah.
It's like, it's referring.
I understand what you're saying.
Established in the.
But it is language that's just consistent. We just keep that. Every zone change, we've heard, you know, language like this.
Has to go to a public hearing.
Yeah, and that is, that is the same language.
And they elect to consider it.
If they elect to consider.
It still am, so it has to change.
Okay, just.
But I understand what you're saying.
Skip the public hearing part.
No, 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 no. In that public hearing, so in this case, generally, just so you understand, this is only for projects that involve funding. And it's only for ones that the seat, so there will be a public hearing. There has to be a public hearing on the funding, and there's a public hearing on the zone landing.
Right, so it doesn't apply to privately financed, uh.
Uh, partially.
It might be a combination.
Yeah, it could be partially, but, you know, it could be ten percent, it could be a hundred percent, but only. So this is completely discretionary on the, uh, town board's part, yeah. Um, as you can see, it's like involves thirty-five units or less. It's not going to solve all the housing problems of the town of Southampton, but it's a start in less, smaller projects.
Which might have public approval.
Correct, right, because the public will have an opportunity to weigh in.
And it's also a smaller project. It's not.
Smaller project, it's not thirty-five, forty units, yeah.
So we can amend the resolution that I have before you to say, um, after the last whereas, it says, whereas the legislation also provides for notice to the citizens advisory committee. And whereas the legislation allows for reduced AMI requirements for projects that are one hundred percent senior housing or disabled housing. And then the be it resolved, and then we can ask, add a second be it resolved, that, um, uh, additional G I S analysis uh, needs to be undertaken for a more fulsome.
Should, should.
Should, right. Should, should be undertaken in order to determine which projects, uh, properties may be eligible. Yeah, okay, that's good.
So with that G I S study, like the, the initial analysis is that, um, it can be within these zones, et cetera. But if there's a particular instance that's unique, can they exclude that?
Like if it's, if it's, um, what's it called?
If it meets all the other criteria.
Yeah, like, well, they, they're gonna have to go work with G I, the G I S department. There are ways for them to weed out parcels based on criteria, and then you're left with a certain amount of parcels. You're gonna have a significant, I would venture to say, amount of parcels, 'cause I actually already did some of the analysis on this.
Right.
So you'll see, they're able to do it. You'll, you'll get a good indication of what's available.
And then it becomes a deter-, it becomes a determination.
Correct.
Of whether it's appropriate.
Correct.
In that unique circumstance. Okay, got it.
Any other comments? The rest were very little, like just more here and there. So those are the substantial.
Yeah, the only thing is that, you know, the unintended consequence of some of this tends to be that, you know, you're sitting near these are the towns that has more vacant land than others.
Mm.
And now you suddenly ended up with multiple parcels in the same corridor or in one hamlet that is meeting those criteria, and you end up with a lot of community housing or that sort of in, in one.
Well, no, that's not necessarily the case, right? Because the community housing overlay, I'm sorry, the community housing fund says that you cannot aggregate all of the affordable housing in one hamlet. Um, that is laid out in the, in the funding, uh, plan. So it has to be more evenly distributed throughout the town. So you can't aggregate it all.
That's the community housing, right, but.
Right.
Yes, but this is.
We've also been saying that, you know, we need to have a real feel for what else is happening, because we have private developments going on. And you look at Major's Path, an example, there's, there's a lot of righteous community outrage over the amount of developments happening there because there's vacant land there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and how do you, how do you avoid that happening in one particular hamlet or along one particular roadway or cor-, corridor because we happen to have vacant land? So community housing may say, we have one parcel we can develop with, with thirty units. But in the meantime, there's ten, there's five other developments that have been done.
If it's private funding, then that requirement with the community housing fund doesn't apply.
Right, but the town board as part of the, you consideration for MF forty-four or senior housing, they would, they should look at that overall, um, project. At, you know, what else is happening in that area?
But I think that's what we're saying. Look in, look at the area, because it's a very broad statement that you make. And it's not like twenty-five percent in each hamlet or ten percent in each, and there's no measure. It's just a very sort of open-ended comment, and I'm, and then you get into trouble.
I'm just, I, I can see, we have one application on Major's Path, and we know that there's a potential second, relatively close. And if we say yes to the first, and we don't, and we say no to the second because you're the second guy to the trough, i- is that illegal?
No, you're allowed to do that. It's, it's, these are discretionary actions. When you change zones, you don't set precedent in that. You have to be consistent in your process for each of them and your analysis on each of them and your SECR on each of them. But you can come to different conclusions based on circumstances of proximity.
Well, so you could, if, if.
The town board can.
The town board can say, we don't wanna overburden one community.
Yeah, they don't even have to elect to consider it. They can say right out of the gate, you know what, we just did one there, let's see how that works for a while. This is, you know, not appropriate with services, infrastructure. is, you know, not appropriate with services, infrastructure, I don't know.
It's also, like, in the authorization of the community housing fund, there's a requirement for them to create a community housing plan, right, that would like guide some of these decisions in the same way a master plan would, and that's what we've been saying, is like assess the available lots, and then also assess the need, so that you can layer what's available with a needs assessment and make a good decision, and archive it so that that board and this board can...
We could say that. I agree with you, I agree with you totally.
Hopefully it goes in there as well.
I know, we have very little time, and these are very important pieces of legislation, because we haven't even gotten to the hotel.
Right.
And I have lots of comments on that.
You, you have time. I had the first hearing on this in December ninth, and I think they were doing another hearing.
On the hotel?
No, not the hotel.
No, this one is November fif, twenty, this one's November twenty-fifth, the hearing is...
We're still on the A hot, the...
C hot.
C hot.
Right, there's going to be more than one hearing on that, is my point.
The problem is, the second hearing is probably December ninth on that one. So I would recommend, I think you, do you think you have your handle on the comments? Okay. So, but the hotel one, is the hearing is on December ninth, and so you talk, you have...
I'm not, I'm not talking about the hotel one, I'm not even...
Okay, so I have those amendments to the resolution. After I make them, I'm happy to send them to you, but we do need a vote.
Okay, motion to, to accept this as amended, this referral. Motion. Motion by Gloria, and second by...
Second.
By George, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, extensions? Six in favor, one absent.
So as we're well aware, Southampton has been for many, many years a tourism-based home, town. However, as properties have been redeveloped, we have lost some temporary housing in favor of more permanent housing. So the proposed hotel development overlay district allows for small-scale boutique-style hotels within the HB zoning district and the resort waterfront business zoning district on parcels that are an aggregate or two acres or more, with a maximum size of sixty-five units. It prohibits transient, I'm sorry, it prohibits long extended stay hotels, it prohibits a hostel, there are some other items that are in the code that are listed. It does allow for some accessory uses like continental breakfast and for use by the hotel...
What about a restaurant?
If the underlying zoning allows for it, and they have the septic in the water, they may be able to do that as well.
Courts, pool, tennis courts, pool.
In theory, as part of their development project plan, it's consistent with other change of zone requirements. They, they come before the board at a work session, the town board elects to consider or not, elects not to consider. If they elect to consider, they move forward with submitting the formal site plan application, not somewhere, site plan application, the formal zone change application, at which point a more fulsome review of septic, water, traffic, all of those items would be outlined. This new code provides for standards for development, particularly architectural styles, so that it fits within the community. But again, it's, it's similar to other change of zone applications that we receive, the process for that.
Would the town board be doing the site plan review or the planning board?
The planning board would do the site plan review.
The town would do the SECR?
Correct.
And we would be an involved agency?
Correct, consistent with every other change of zone application.
Okay. Can I ask you how the sixteen to sixty-five units was arrived at?
I think we were trying to find a happy medium, we were trying, initially when we were developing the code, we were trying to figure out units per acre, and it wasn't really working out, we couldn't find any examples of units per acre for hotels. So we were just trying to figure out how to keep it still small scale without, you know, overwhelming community.
If I can say, sixty-five units is not small scale. Sixty-five unit hotel is a large hotel.
It's getting into...
Would it say as determined in a work session with the planning board? Because then we would have that little stopgap to weigh in before the...
This is really like crunch fill for us to give. I mean, I have lots of questions here.
This would also allow, it seems to me, when I read it, this would allow a restaurant for the residents of the hotel?
Yes.
And that would mean the, remember we had a proposal from the Bentley Hotel, that we were all kind of like, whoa, what's happening here? They would fit into this, it seems to me, right? It would allow them to go forward.
There are lots of things. Has it ever been in highway business before, hotels?
I'd have to look at the code again.
I don't believe so.
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Hotels are most all zoning.
Right.
Or RWB.
But not in highway business.
Or like two-week transient.
Not HB.
Not HB.
No. So now that it's in HB, you have a lot, there's going to be, you're going to see a lot of applications. Well, there's an application, it was a news day this week, the, the people who own the Indigo in Riverhead are, want to build on the, on the Boardy Bond property.
Do you want to build what?
Build a hotel like the Hotel Indigo in Riverhead on the Boardy Bond property.
I have, we, we'd seen that before, I think.
Well, it was, it was a, it was a news day this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that...
So a minimum of two acres, I mean, that seems, if you put a sixty-five unit hotel on two acres...
Well, again, you have to consider the size of the parcel, how much sanitary it can, it can support, if they're even, if they end up doing a sewage treatment plant as a package plant for the development, you still have to size that out. So it, you know, the size of the hotel is going to be contingent on the size of the lot. The bigger the lot, the more, more units they can have.
Does this put the, it puts the SECR with the town board?
Yes.
Right, and that has been problematic to the planning process?
Yes.
Right, but as an involved agency, you would get the referral, and you would be able to say, hey, this is a lot of septic, it's too many units, bring down the units, the septic comes down, the restaurant, you know, gets smaller, so on and so on.
After the fact.
Right.
There must be a referral.
There is a referral.
There's a referral.
This is to all change the zone request.
But they're not, they don't have to adhere to our comments.
Correct.
Why were hostels omitted?
I'm sorry, what?
Why were hostels omitted?
Hostels.
Hostels, I, I believe it was just for the purposes of having high-end, consistent with community standards.
Well, it's also transient, a hostel is a couple of nights, and that's it. Well, so is a hotel.
I think this is transient.
Yeah, this is transient.
Transient, right.
Not long term.
This could be a night.
Because, the reason I ask that, because, you know, boutique hotels are more expensive than regular hotels. If you're looking to get a place with people to stay, most people can't afford it. Three Ducks Hotel, which, that, in West Hampton Beach, where they converted that, that Motte, it's over seven hundred dollars a night to stay there, off-season.
Oh, wow.
How much?
Over seven hundred dollars a night. I was looking at a hotel's room for my family for a September, October eleventh, October eleventh wedding in Riverhead, and it was seven hundred and fifty dollars a night.
So you're saying that you would like to include hostels?
Well, I think that, well, I'm just asking a question, you know, you're not providing any options for legal...
It's the definition of a hostel.
Yeah.
Is there in the code?
That's a separate, like... Oh, yeah, but you would, if you wanted to include it, then in, and include a definition.
But I could, I could see where a community would not want a bunch of backpackers partying. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm...
Oh, my trail, it'd be so fun.
The town spent years getting rid of some of the low-end motels in this town.
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
I know.
I'm not sure what the driving need for this legislation right now is, to be honest with you. The affordable housing legislation, I can see there's a driving need to move forward with that. I'm not sure I understand what the driving, besides having, agreeing, like with Jackie comments, a sixty-five-room hotel is not a small size. I'm just not quite sure what the driving purpose of why the town board, I think we need more time to look at it, and I think the town board needs more time to look at it, frankly. That's my, that's my thought.
Right, and I agree with that. I mean, for example, on page six, you have number L, no guest shall establish residence in a motel or hotel established for transient use for more than thirty consecutive days. There are consecutive days a month, it's a long time.
You have the opportunity, I, I might be mistaken, because I think it was referred to us after the November eleven, or twelfth meeting, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so you do have until December eleventh to adopt this, you have thirty days. So we're hearing your comments, and maybe you can think about it, and we could refine something to then issue, right?
Yes.
I think the hearing is the nine.
The hearing is the nine.
But they were not going to open and close it, because you haven't, they haven't received your comments yet.
I'll read it again.
So...
We have another bite of the apple. You will, but now we have your comments, she can write them up pretty articulately, and we'll work on that.
All right, so we'll have to give you that.
Yes, so you can shoot me emails about any concerns you have, I can flush them out, I can send you a draft before the next meeting.
Well, I agree with Tom, I mean, what is the rush? Why is this happening now? Affordable having...
I can tell you why.
Why?
The election's over, somebody wants, this is something that the board wants, and they're proposing it right now, that's what it is.
And there are not a lot of people around, and it's holidays.
Well, I'm not saying it.
What's the pressure about, is some big hotel thing coming in, they're trying to block? And what's the pressure to do it at this moment?
Oh, it's just, I'm just saying that there was nothing going on, and then all of a sudden it feels like things are going, it's because, okay, election's over.
So, so two... I mean, you have to remember that this has been on and off discussed for several years. I mean, that was why we bought the Bel Air Hotel, and, you know, it was like, oh, well, maybe we can put something here, you know, it, it has been off and on discussed for several years, the need to provide enhanced accommodations.
Teresa, did, did you all make an inventory of the existing hotels before you did this? Is there an existing inventory?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'd have to look for it, there aren't that many.
There are, I mean, that's the baseline.
Right.
How many are there? How many guests do they provide?
Okay.
I mean, what we're looking for, and I think what you're hearing, is that a lot of legislation gets put together, it's very broad, very open definitions of things, and we're asking for a baseline. How many hotels do we have? How many more do we want? Should it be one building? Should it be campus-style? I mean, there's so many questions that are not addressed in this legislation.
Don't forget, there's a lot of registered B and Bs that hold twelve, fifteen guests, so they're, they're not hotels, but they're B and Bs, and there are a lot of them in the area.
Yes.
So this is not a criticism of planning or anybody's effort, and if this has been kicked around for years, I don't know that we're aware of it.
We haven't seen it.
If there is such a need, don't forget that West Hampton Commercial Development was[1700.54]